I'd like to call the board. The City of Dunellen City Council Workshop. It is July 6th, 2022. It is now 5:35 PM. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Richard Sanders, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all would continue to stand. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to come up and say a short prayer? Tom, thank you.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, as always, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for your goodness, we thank you for your grace, and we thank you for your mercies. We thank ye, Lord, for the hedge of protection you have around the city of God. And Father, I pray in Jesus' name that you bless this council and all of us in attendance, Lord. Bless us with knowledge, wisdom, and discernment in regards to the decisions we have to make. Help us to be in one accord for the goodness of this city. And Father, may you help us all to be quick to listen, slow to anger, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Everyone have a seat. Okay, Ms. Odom, roll call.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Henshaw.
Here.
Captain Woman Williams.
Here.
Captain Woman Keating.
Here.
Captain Woman Prebage.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk.
Here.
Dan Smith, Financing Officer.
Here.
Troy Slattery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Georgina Stig, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Denowski, Director's Clerk.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yaw.
Here.
Andrew Hahn, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall bulletin board on Wednesday, June 29th, 2022.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. Couple things to go over with. We did originally earlier today, we had scheduled a budget workshop that was canceled and postponed until Ms. Odom, July 20th.
20.
And what's the time for that?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. So mark on your calendars if you wanted to attend that budget workshop, it will be the 20th. What that workshop is, it's actually a very important workshop. It's going over the proposed city financing for the coming year. We'll itemize the different departments and where the money is going. It's a kind of a tedious process to go through it, but it's actually very important. So how the money's gonna spend, how the city's gonna spend the money that we have coming in. Also, this is a time to go over a few of the house rules. If you have a ringing device, it's a good time to turn it off during the meeting. Please, if you want to converse, go outside. The acoustics in this room are actually quite good. The, everything that is said is being recorded. People are listening on Zoom, and it's also being transposed. So any conversation that blocks the ability to listen to the repeat of the audio is an issue. If you decide you want to speak, which we highly encourage, this council loves to hear what you have to say, you will have two opportunities to speak at this workshop. You'll have an opportunity right at the beginning, then you will listen to the council discuss the items that are on the agenda, and then if you would like to speak a second time, then you can speak at the end of the meeting. At a workshop, there are no limitations on what the subject matter can be. You can speak to something new, or something old, or something that's on the agenda that you would like to give us an idea what you think about before you start. We do ask everyone to realize that we are public servants. We are bound by our code of conduct to treat you respectfully, and we will. And we expect in return to be respected in how we're approached. So with that said, on Agenda Item Number One, we start off with public comments. Anyone who wants to speak, you have three minutes to speak. At three minutes, if you've never done it before, it's actually quite easy. Just get to the point. If you tell us about where you were born and where you lived, and grandpa and grandma and whatever, we'll, we'll do my best. Get your point. Say, "I'm here to speak in favor or in opposition to something. This is why I'm for it or against it. These are some of my suggestions to deal with it." And then repeat it again, "That's why I'm either for or against it." Quite surprising what you can get done in three minutes. So the way we start off is those that have signed up first, get to speak first. Those that haven't signed up that want to speak will still be offered an opportunity to speak before we get into the agenda. Just be acknowledged that once we leave Agenda Item Number One and we get into our agenda, you will not have another opportunity to speak until we go through the entire agenda, which usually takes a couple hours. So if you want to speak about something and you don't want to spend the entire evening at the meeting, you should take advantage of speaking on Agenda Item Number One. With that said, Amanda, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes.
Now, Peter, let me ask you, are you part of the presentation that is Item Number Four?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay. Have at it.
Uh, my name is Pete Langlos. I live in Crystal River. Uh, I'm here tonight because...
Need your full address, please.
Oh, 1123 Southeast 3rd Avenue, and it's on the record. Uh, I'm here tonight because I've worked with restoration efforts both the Crystal River and Home Assas over the past few years. Uh, I live on a canal just out from Three Sister Springs. It was one of the very first canals restored in Crystal River. That work was done in 2017, and today we have grass across the bottom. We have sea life that we had not seen before. Uh, I worked with both of the Save Crystal River Organization and Home Assas River Restoration Project on helping them develop their documentation and their websites that explain the process of how the restoration works. And I encourage anyone who wants kind of a deep dive into understanding that to look at savehomeassasriver.org. They have a great series of pages that explain exactly how the restoration process works and talk about the history. Also, the website, Home Assas River Restoration Project, goes through the history of how that organization worked to get the legislature to fund their activities. So it is a multi-year history of what happened there. So it may be useful for anyone who's looking at restoration effort to kind of be able to look back at a organization that has a similar mission and value statement, and then see how they approached it, as well as how they documented their results. Uh, my purpose here tonight is to make you aware of those things and make myself available should you need to have anyone to talk to about this kind of stuff. Uh, because I very much value this ecosystem here, and I understand how valuable it is both for generations of people who live here in the future, as well as for our economics. And so that's as, that's really what I'm here to say to you tonight, and I'm gonna be great. Thank you very much.
If I could just, one question, usually we just listen without comment. Are you here in affiliation with One Rake at a Time?
I have worked with Art and One Rake at a Time in the past, and I have also worked with other organizations that do restoration work. So I consider myself a good friend of Art, and I support his restoration activity.
So is your company separate and distinct from Art, in other words?
Yes. I'm here as a private individual who has a background in working in this area.
And what are you offering to us? I mean...
I can point you at how methodologies are that are documented for how do you tell what's in the water? How do you tell what problems exist? How do you analyze those? I could talk to you through the process of evaluating and then making a plan and then executing the plan. So I've worked closely to see that done in two different restoration cycles that are local.
Okay. Well, the question I have is, on Agenda Item Number Four, we're gonna have a presentation similar to the program you're describing, and I'm just trying to figure out if you're intertwined with that or separate.
No. I'm here as a private individual who supports Art and his mission because I've seen this mission work in other places.
All right. Thank you. I got it. Thank you. All right. Ms. Odom, anyone else signed up? Welcome, sir. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Tony Mans. It's 16642 Southwest 67th Place, and it's 34481 Ocala. Um, I have lived in this county all my life. I've been enjoying this Rainbow River the last two years practically every single weekend. Um, and some of my neighbors started making me aware of the hydrela, the stuff that's in there. And we come up with an idea to try to remove a lot of it. So we have the borges, and we rake it up, we pile it up. I have a pile the size of a Volkswagen in the back of our park. But my main concern is maybe some of the sheriffs or the volunteer sheriffs or the boats that go up and down the river could help make some of the other neighbors on the river more aware of what they do when they just rake stuff up. And we see floats of grass and a lot of isle grass, which should be preserved, which we do where we pull up in the real Vista Park. So mainly, the awareness and the, like, the wingby on the muck is a major, major problem that should be taken care of now rather than later. We can walk a dozen feet off our bank and sink off our knees. So it's very not pleasurable for anybody to do. Um, and basically, I would like to educate the other neighbors upstream what they're doing to us downstream. So my idea of a restoration project was start upstream so that you never have a problem with stuff going back downstream. So if you start downstream and you work upstream, you're just creating another problem that you need to create funding for. So, you know, but if you start at the top, nothing that falls out of your hands never goes the other way. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Let me ask you one question. I just have to. Are you a private company that does this work on the Rainbow River?
No, sir. I'm a private citizen in the real distance. Um, and I just took it as a passion of mine to help improve our park because when I came there, I can show you aerial photos that the whole thing is just black.
You're like a volunteer.
Yes, sir.
Volunteer that goes out and does this.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for talking.
Thanks, Andy.
Is there anyone else signed up, Ms. Odom?
I'm not signed up. But I'd like to...
Bill Bevler.
Bill Bevler.
Bill Bevler, 9552 Southwest 192nd Court, Odenal. I have a handout. I don't know if you've all gotten it. You have a handout there? It says comments on Blue Run Park ordinance draft. Thank you, true. Troy can fix anything.
A few comments that I want to refer to briefly, but I can give us in three minutes. The first general point is that we have been seeing abuse of Blue Run Park over the interlocal agreement, and that's sort of what I opened the focus on, the interlocal agreement between county and...
Sorry, Dave. I can barely hear you.
How about now? Is that better?
Yeah, better. Thank you. That was me. Thank you.
Can you make the longer charge? Can you...
It's referred to as the KP Hole Shuttle. That's been in operation for probably 30 years without really any conflict or problems with... Here he comes again. What are you gonna do this?
Julie, start us single, okay?
This doesn't count, my comment.
There we go.
I wrote a couple of comments up because I think what's necessary now, and I'm happy to see that you're working on the ordinance again. Needs to be tightened up a little bit because we now have seen activities that we didn't have historically. We only ever had one commercial vendor, and that was Nathan with its operation of the River Connections, and now we have a new one. And what they've been doing is they've been picking up customers at their Route 31 headquarters, transporting them to KP Hole, dropping them off in the river. They go down the river, they end up in Blue Run Park, or they get picked up and taken back, not to, not to KP Hole, but back to their headquarters on Route 31. That's what's been happening. So with that said, a couple of things to happen if you saw my comments. It's overwhelming Blue Run Park, it's adding additional traffic to the river, and it's a violation of all the agreements that started back in 2008, which have prohibited commercial use since then. I just want to refer to a couple of things, which I haven't yet read to you. If you look at the suggested language, if you have that in front of you, it says, number two, shuttle customers are limited to those originating their trip at KP Hole, not to someone else. Paying the appropriate fee at KP Hole Park Office and displaying the proper color of alien risk. Transport of non-shuttle customers originating their trip from other locations is prohibited. That would close the loophole, and I've talked angry about this, and Julie agrees with this. We want to close that loophole and not allow the shuttle to be picking up people from other places. The shuttle is intended to do one thing, and that's to pick up people at Blue Run Park, take them back to their car at KP Hole, and that's it. Not picking up hundreds of people from other places. One other, one of these items that you mentioned is, number four, authorized KP Hole shuttle buses shall utilize the designated Blue Run Park drop-off area. Use of local streets is prohibited due to safety. Park trails may not be used by shuttle customers. Do you think I would rather just say that? That's a part of the shuttle operation? And I mean, we're talking about alligators, and we're talking about safety, those may be important issues. But the real issue is we have commercial use using the park, and I think we need to make that clear that that's not permitted. I've gone to the rules, but I see that there's some changes in the rules. I don't know if you have the rules in front of you, but if I look at the section for Blue Run Park, Section 46, Act 77, which we've been talking about for probably six months, I guess. These are the rules, and by the way, and I've said this many times, these are the same rules that we had in 2008. We wrote these rules in 2008. The county approved them. Everybody signed off on them, all the partners did. They've been on the sign, 2015 resolution has the same rules on it. And the rules that are in the ordinance are almost, there's been a couple of changes. We didn't have the kayak ramp then, and we didn't have the trails then, but they're basically the same basic park rules. No commercial use is common throughout the country in almost every county, local, federal park. In my own experience with it is, every park I ever managed had a no commercial use rule. And the only exception to that, for example, the KP Hole Shuttle, you could write exceptions into the rule, but generally, the basic rule is no commercial use, it's not permitted in most parks. Because the commercial use has been taking over the park system. My own experience with day camps, once I was all of a sudden, we had... All right.
Okay, Bill, you have to wrap it up.
All right. One other suggestion. We get to 46-79, and we're down to Item Two, small dots. The provision of any service or activity associated with commercial use. So if the commercial use is picking up at one place, dropping off at another, whatever they're doing, if they're walking through the trails of the park, that's part of the commercial use. That's a component of that commercial use, and it should be regarded as such and enforced as such. And that's what that language would do. Or activity associated with commercial use. There's no doubt that people are being, are getting off the river at the ramp, walking through the woods to a car somewhere else, that's part of the commercial use that should be...
Okay, Bill. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
I have a few more pages.
Bill? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Odom, is there anyone else signed up?
Bill Carroll. Do you want to go make the other?
No, Bill Carroll's here.
Hello, Mr. Carroll.
Hey, welcome to the city.
Please give us your name and address and...
Hello, Andy.
There we go. Bill Carroll, Green, 18967 Southwest 109th Street, Dan Allen, 34432. I've come up this evening to talk to everybody about the same thing that Mr. Vance come up and talked about. I am the neighbor that he met. Me and my wife moved there. The park was just about useless. It had a little spot and bed that you could stand in. She's done a lot of research to do what we should pull out, what we should leave, or is, you know, indigenous. So we started doing that, and then we had neighbors that come in and just picked it up and run with it. So I'm like the mad scientist in the shed building stuff while we have other people out, you know, actually pulling this stuff out. But it is a real problem, our neighbors upstream pulling stuff up and just letting it float. We've seen firsthand people out doing it. We say, "Hey," we try to educate. We're just two guys in a boat, you know, with our families, and they keep raking up and letting it float up, and, you know, who knows where it goes? In our neighborhood, some of it, you know, some of it down river. Just, that's what I gotta talk about. Maybe something to educate people. Sign on the boats. The boats go up and down the river all the time. Something on the side, pull up and remove. Don't let float down the river. I'm not sure what to put up there. There's people a lot smarter than me to figure that out, but... That's basically it. Over the other, red light at 41 and 1 Dixie. If we could get some help on that thing, you know, get it changed up, we waited a little over three minutes to turn left to come here this year. It doesn't really seem like a long time to you, sitting there first in line waiting to turn, so... That's it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll, thank you for coming in. I know I called the chief the other day about the red light when it was backed up all the way to 41, and I know, and I think some of your ideas are great, and I applaud all of y'all for doing your hard work. It's, trust me, by the way our river blood is, we're right past the island, and we just get all that oop, and we try and get it up on the banks, but it's pain. But anyway, just to let you know also, we will do what we can and sever our portion of the river, but really and truly also what y'all need to do, and about the light as well, is go to the county commissioners as well. I mean, they need to hear the same thing we're doing because the part of the river that you're basically referring to, we have no control over. But we'll partner with them and make a great plan that, that works with both, you know, parts of the river, but really and truly take this also to your county commissioners, okay? That would be one of my suggestions to educate them like you'll educate us, and we appreciate it. But I think if we can work as partners with the county, I think we'll get the whole river being educated as well. So I applaud all of y'all for the hard effort, and thank you.
And this is the first time we've come up and spoken, and so we've been doing that art here at this council meeting, and that's how we kind of got to know to do this. Before, we were just out there doing it on our own.
You did good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We're good for a start.
One thing I can add is you might reach out to Rainbow River Conservation, the group that really herd dogs through the river. Possibly ask if you can go to one of their meetings and go over some of your thoughts with them. That would be very helpful. Rainbow River Conservation. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? All right. Name and address.
My name is Arlette Kaplan, 11875 East Blue Cove Drive, Dan Allen. I've got my husband back here that's gonna be showing me some things, how to do things the wrong way. Um, everything's, everything's, we have moved here. We have seen where all of this garbage that is getting pulled up and where it ends up because we're at the end of the river down Rice Hoppies. So we see a lot of, all of the eel grass and the things that come down, especially after the end of a busy weekend. When we first moved here on the river, there was COVID happening. We were looking for somebody like you to come and educate us on what we needed to get rid of and how to get rid of it, and maybe even pay you to get rid of it. But in the meantime, we've done things wrong. Bob is pulling up one of the rakes that we got. It's very dangerous. I can show you it. I've got wounds on my leg that I have torn, torn my legs up using that. That's just one of the things that we've used, as well as breaking many rakes, breaking many pitchforks, and any kind of rakes that we could find. This one right here is one of the rakes that most people have used and have told us this is what we should use. We've tried that one also. I've even tried to turn into a mermaid and pull the stuff and put it on the dock, or I've even tasted the stuff that, as much as the farmers say that they have fertilized it, it doesn't taste good.
Not good sushi.
No. Anyway, we've done things wrong. About four months ago, we came to one of the meetings. We've been coming on and off for the last year, and four months ago, we met Art, and we could hardly wait to pounce on him and get his information so that we could get more knowledge on what to do and how to clean up the river. Because we have been kayaking many years, even before we lived here. And upstream, it looks way better than it does where we're at. So we are volunteering, we have donated money to One Rake at a Time, and we are willing to get into the river with our scuba gear and do whatever we need to do to help, whether it's starting at the top or at the bottom. We don't care, but we want to see the river as beautiful as we have seen it in the past many, many years ago when we used to kayak up and down this river. That's all I have to say. Nothing else to offer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
I'd like to, sir.
Tim. Name and address.
Tim Minsky, 12140 Maple Street here in Dunellen. I'd like to add on, there is only one organization that controls permits on that river as far as anybody can move, and that's the FWC and the biologists. Nobody can pull anything out of that river without that permit, and on that, and you can only remove whatever they put on that map. You don't get to do your whole property, you don't get to do somebody else's or anything, and you can only remove the vegetation that is on that permit. So there are restrictions. Folks just can't go out there and pull stuff. There's a reminder of that because they will hand out some hefty fines, too, or down for me, a pretty good one. And the other thing is, is that they have in big, bold letters on the permit with large font than the rest of it that says, "You must remove the vegetation that is pulled." So then at the very end of the river, we see all the vegetation come down also. This one reminds everybody, you can't just go this, and so this organization, that organization. The FWC is the one that controls the permits on that river and decides where you can pull and what you can pull. People still get in trouble with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. That's a good reminder. Seems like FWC had a reputation years ago of being very, very strict in patrolling that, and you don't see them very often out there. Basically, when they're spraying, that's about the only time you see them. But you're exactly right. A permit does specify where, how far into the water, and what you can pull.
It's free.
Yeah. I will say, I've seen on the river globs of material that had to been pulled out somewhere upstream, so big that you'll have a great blue heron floating on it all the way down the river. It's a massive stuff that's about the size of that part of the room where everybody's sitting. So I've seen it, I've witnessed it. Also, at the end of a Saturday or Sunday, when the river is very busy with swimmers and boaters and whatever, you look at the water in the morning, it's real clear and nice. By the time you get late in the afternoon, you can't even see the bottom in some parts of the Rainbow River because of how much is churned up along with weeds and whatever that floats somewhere else and roots somewhere else. So it is a, it is a, it is an issue, no question. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes. Hello, Dave. Oh, what you do to your back?
I'm Dave Porter, 11835 East Blue Cove Drive in Dan Allen. So Art talks a lot about planting eel grass. I'd like to plant something else tonight. And so we've been talking about redoing the vision for the city, and so right now we have distinctly Dan Allen, which is kind of catchy. But I would like to plant the thought of the Dan Allen being the gateway to the Rainbow River. And if you think about it, how much effort this council and how much in the last five years that we've dedicated to the Rainbow River. We've protected the river from... We've protected the river from other commercial activities being along the river. We've tried to limit some of the traffic on the river, limiting the boats and stuff like that. We have river cleanups, beach cleanups and stuff like that. So, so Dunellen is, is really famous for the Rainbow River. And so I think our vision statement should have something in it to be in essence of the Rainbow River. And so, so with that, I think it, it is a theme for the council to back the protection of the river and the cleaning up of the river. I'm also a river front owner and Olympia comes back my day. So it becomes almost hopeless and it has to be a bigger approach than just shoveling it out and with a permit. So I support Art. I supported the project and I, I would encourage the council to back that project at least with some kind of acknowledgement so we can, as a city, get behind at least the money to produce the survey so we can at least get the government involved and it kind of starts growing next dimension. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hilton, did she want to speak?
Yeah, just very shortly. It's in our blood. Mary Ann Hilton, one two zero seven eight, on in a court, Dunellen, Florida. Yesterday midday, I walked out on my, I have two docks, high and low. I walked out on my upper dock. There was a log approximately twice the size of this, maybe more, floating down the river. People are taking stuff up and they're just tossing it in the river and nobody seems to be aware of it and nobody seems to want to do anything about it and I am tired of it. I love that river. This is the only place that I could, that my husband, I better would allow my husband to move to when we came down from Michigan because this is the only place that was what I grew up with and now it is, is no more. We need to get the people that are destroying that river and haul their little bodies out of it and not let them use it. If they're caught doing what they shouldn't do, when you have fifteen boats flying along with a flag telling you that they're voting for somebody or whatever, we get that fairly frequently where I live. There should be some limitations on how that river is used and what it does and the effects that it has on those of us that are paying a lot of taxes to manage to live there. I really think we need to take a good look at how that river is being used and put some holds on it because I am tired of seeing people tear it up and destroy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Art?
Hey, Art Jones, one two one six three, Meadowway, here in Dunellen. I reached out to Ralph Masulo, told him we had a workshop tonight on this event, on the One Rake at a Time Project, and he sent me a text and asked if I could agree to the city council. This is from Ralph Masulo, our representative. Art Jones has a passion for our environment, our water, for Florida. Where ten years ago, he decided he was not going to sit idly by and wait for someone else to start cleaning up the muck that had developed over the years of nutrient excess in the Crystal River. So he got out in the water and started the shoreline, along the shoreline and started removing the algae and muck one rake at a time. In time, his actions elicited more and more people to help him. His volunteer force grew and so did the public's awareness of the priority of cleaning up our beautiful rivers and keeping them clean. As the movement grew, so did its impact and notoriety, reaching the state capital in Tallahassee where tens of millions of dollars have been allocated over the last few years to both the Crystal River and Homosassa River restoration projects. You see, the beauty of America has always been its people's vision of a better future. Art's vision of cleaning small amounts of water started a deluge of projects to rectify our rivers and springs and that same vision and concept can work right here on the Rainbow River as well. As your state representative, I enthusiastically support and endorse these efforts and have confidence that your involvement will not only lead to a more pristine waterway that will give each and every individual involved a sense of accomplishment, pride and ownership in the work they perform that's not even mentioning the physical and psychological benefits of being together outside in God's nature, doing physical labor, improving a small part of your Florida. They say the longest journey starts with the first small step. That adage applies to many conditions in life, including cleaning and restoring our most beautiful, precious resource, our waters, one rake at a time. Ralph Masulo, Florida House of Representatives. So I'm very honored that he sent me, took the time to send me that text and I'm very honored to, to take charge and make a lead at this because I know it can work. I know that we can do better. I know we can remove that hydrilla and make it better. And I'll talk more about that when I have my time during the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very impressive. Anyone else?
Show me that, since you have it printed on the record, that way she doesn't have to type.
Well, they sent me a text and then I just printed it up so I could read it easier.
That's fine.
Sure. There's actually a few letters, we didn't have time to read the other one. Copy both, please.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Going once, twice, okay. Please note that at six ten, public comment has concluded. Everyone that has asked to speak has been allowed to. And so, one last thing, is there any possibility someone on Zoom that would like to speak? Okay, so we've covered it all. All right, we're going to go to item number two now, board reports. Do we have any board reports? From the historic board, nothing? The only thing I can report on the TPO, we just had a meeting within the last week. It was pretty much a standard TPO meeting, transportation, a meeting. And I did bring up to the group that we were concerned in Dunellen that the four-laning of forty-one had been pretty much shuttled. It was pretty high on the list and we were expecting it to be four-laned from Walmart to up near forty within the next couple of years. And surprisingly, not that long ago, FDOT put it off its five-year list. So I put that back in the play, an FDOT representatives there, a couple of them, and I asked them questions about why something that is this important and it's already been classified as a high-volume-use road, plenty of accidents that verify that there needs to be something to be done. I actually asked them, why would this be dropped off the list? So I put that back in play. I think there will be some discussion on that. When you see some of the things that are designed to be done over the next five years, it's hard to figure why anything would be put in front of four-laning that area. Anybody that lives in Rainbow Springs, and I know there are people that live in Rainbow Springs, sometimes having to make a left-hand turn onto forty-one, I've done it plenty of times. It's sometimes near impossible to get out of there, so much traffic only there. So hopefully something will come of that. But right now, there are no plans for the next five years on, on that, but that is subject to change. Now, why, the explanation I got is they have limited funds and they have to make tough decisions. My attitude is make a tough decision somewhere else. But I just want to report that to you. That's my report on that. Anyone else? Okay. Sodom, anything else on board reports? Okay, we're going to item number three, the Dunellen Chamber and Business Association report. Hi, Judy. And we're also going to have a mini website presentation along with your report?
Yep.
Okay.
My name is Judy Twilliger. I'm the director of the Dunellen Chamber Business Association. We have two new members, Juan Scott Insurance Solutions and Detail Detail. Some of our upcoming events are July eighth, we have a free social media roundtable at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op from three thirty to four thirty. July ninth, we have the American Legion Christmas in July show from nine to two. July thirteenth, we have a calligraphy workshop at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op from one to three. The cost for that is fifteen dollars. On July sixteenth, we have, well, Power Foundation is hosting a glow beach volleyball tournament, which to my understanding, that means it's volleyball under black light. And that's going to be at the Liberty Park Depot in Inverness. And the cost of that is eighty dollars per team of four. On July seventeenth is the Sunday Sampler at the Greater Dunellen Historical Society Train Depot from two to four, and that's a fifteen dollar donation for that. July twenty-second is the Whistlestop Cafe at the Greater Dunellen Historical Train Depot. The food is from five to eight and the music is from seven to nine by Patrick Ford. And then they have Danielle Stevens with the tourism website.
And thank you to Ms. Odom for quickly getting that for me. I appreciate you, such last minute, I really appreciate you. Okay, so Discover Dunellen. I'm going to show you guys the presentation that I showed at the Dunellen Chamber meeting. And this presentation was for people that didn't know this website was coming. They had not seen it before, many of you have been here and seen this before, so I'm going to go through it as if nobody has. If you'll go to the next slide, please, thank you so much. So what is Discover Dunellen? Discover Dunellen is a visitor website. It's to stimulate the desire to travel to Dunellen. It, we want to provide the necessary information for users to travel, such as where to stay or where to eat. We want to give a visual of our town and I wanted to give a big thank you to Julie Mancini Photography for providing her photographs for this project. Very well together. And then we also want to keep it simple. We want people to be able to find what they're looking for easily. We don't want it to, we don't want everything everywhere and they're not sure where to go or what to do. So we wanted to keep the website very simple. And it provides a lot of useful information for visitors, such as how to be on the, on the river responsibly. So we've got information like that as well so that, you know, when people are here, they are respecting our rivers and doing what they're supposed to do. Next slide, please. Some of the features of the website, it is mobile-friendly and it has travel and hospitality. Businesses are able to have a free account on the website and customize their listing if they, if they want to. I can do it for them as well, but they are able to go in there and claim the listing, have an account and do all of this themselves. They can even add events and pictures and notices on their, on their listing or they can add events to our calendar. Each listing has a review section, though the website will only display positive reviews. So we will be monitoring those reviews. The website is Google search friendly, just like I talked with you about Louise. The URL structure will be very nicely, nicely done. It's going to say discoverdunellen.com forward slash local events, forward slash the name of the event. So that is very easy to be seen on Google. If you have a business, you can advertise it on discoverdunellen.com. Maybe your business isn't in the hospitality or travel industry, but you still want to be seen to visitors. You can run an ad on the website and the chamber is doing a special right now. It's a hundred dollars for six months if you purchase the ad before September first. After that, the price increases by thirty-three percent. And then next, and then for the future. So the website will be constantly updating. It's, it's, you know, we're just going to, as we learn what works and what doesn't work, then we'll move things around or add new stuff. So we'll add new events, we'll add new businesses, we'll remove businesses that close or as things change, as rules change, we'll change that on the website too. It will be constantly changing. We'll be adding more categories such as campsites, agritourism and equestrian events and adventures to the website. And you can follow us on Facebook to stay up to date on the latest happenings on discoverdunellen.com. And if, Ms. Odom, you would please pull up the Discover Dunellen website. Thank you. So when you come to the website, what I noticed is, you know, our welcome to Dunellen sign, the picture that'll show up, it's like the same photo, it's of the little cartoon of the bird in the water. It's actually the same as soon as it, as soon as it loads. So I think it goes really well with the town and the feel of the town. Well, we can scroll down as it loads. So right away when you get there, simple, where to eat, where to stay, where to play. And if you click on where to eat for me, that would be great, yes. Or maybe the Seaword, yes, maybe I'll need to link that. If you scroll down, there's a map of all the listings and you can actually click on one of those map markers and see the name of the business, but then if you scroll down, you can see, if you click on Boulevard, Boulevard Hostel, each, each one gets their listing. So if you click on that one, yes. There's the outside of the restaurant, contact details, there's also a map. They don't have about us, but if you keep scrolling, they do, there are advertisements there, you can see that. And then there's an image gallery of some of the images of the place. And if you scroll a little more, you can see there's other information, you can claim their listing. It's very nice. If you hit the back button, one more time, we'll go back to the homepage and keep scrolling. It shows the latest events coming up. So we've got two events coming up at Swampies, those are musical events. And then we've got the Sunday Sampler at the Historical Society. If you click on the Sunday Sampler for me, I appreciate it, my stand away, Ms. Odom. You can see it tells all about the event. There's a picture, if you keep scrolling, it gives other information such as the organizer and where the venue is and how to get there and even to view the venue's website. Yes. And then, is there anything else I wanted to show you? Oh, scroll down, visit responsibly is right there at all times. We've got the weather, what the weather is right now. There's some more advertising if we scroll down. Will you click on local events? I want to show the local events pages in the menu in the second row to the left or up there. That's the same, yep. So you can even, you see there's a button to add your event. But then if you scroll down, you can see the list of events that's happening all this month. And each has their photo in there. If you keep scrolling, it's even at the bottom to add your event. If you click on that, it's very easy to just fill out the form and I get a notification that there's an event and I check to make sure that it's something that we should have on the website and I approve it.
Are you doing the, I know with the restaurants and such, you were going to rotate them so that they're not always eat through?
Yes, they are randomized. So if you go back to the top and under plan your visit, just hover and go to where to eat. So we'll see it, if we scroll down, we'll see that Southern Palette is first and if you refresh the page, it'll be something completely different.
That's wonderful.
There's Don Cafe. So it is, and I'm going to be categorizing them a little bit deeper as we go on because right now there's just restaurants, but what if somebody wants lunch or dinner or, you know, and some, some places only serve breakfast. So I'm going to be. So I'm going to be, it's just going to get more intricate at the time.
And this is your home button, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that'll always take you to the homepage, no matter what page you're on.
It is, yep, the logo, yep. So, does anybody have any questions? Well, I appreciate your time, and you guys thinking of this project and helping out with it. Again, it was a passion of mine to do this project, and I look forward to continuing to maintain it as time goes on. So thank you again.
If I can say before you leave?
Sure.
This is something that's been long overdue for this town, long overdue. Where people now can come in, go to that website, and get ideas what to do while you're in town. One of the things that we've always said is, how do you get people that come here for a day on the river, how do you get them to stay overnight?
Right.
Spend some money. And something like this makes it very convenient and easy for them to find out. Should have been done 20 years ago, if we had, did we have computers 20 years ago?
Yes, we did.
Maybe? So I think this is absolutely exciting, and I hope it goes over great.
I think so. We have other plans to show off at some of the events.
Right, the, what are you, talkers or? Like at the, are you most part? What is the event?
Oh, the first Saturday.
First Saturday, having a move out there.
I know we made a contribution to it, and I think that was money very well spent.
Another thing I've talked to the board about is, we had these little visitor cards, so if you use them, you got a discount at whatever place was on the card, so that they could, like, if they were staying here, they could use it.
Quick question, just a thought. Can you do a QR code that will take you to the, we do a QR code on this little, even on like, you know how we do the stickers on the doors, like, I'm a member of the Dunellen?
Oh, Discover Dunellen.
And then do a little QR code that would take you immediately there, that'd be a thought about that.
That's a really nice idea. Thank you, I like that.
Can I say something?
No.
Sure. Me had gotten an email, and I did respond to the email.
I did, I saw your response.
I know recollection is important, but I thought that places of worship, you may not be able to add all of them, but some people come from like the church.
So I did.
So I just thought that might be a good idea.
I did discuss that with the board, I did not leave your comments out.
Okay.
I made sure to talk with that. And it was a vote to not have it in right at this moment, so it wasn't any one person's decision. But as I said, it will continue to move on, I'm sure that will come up again.
Okay.
And it may be added, but as, how many people are on the board, like eight?
Twelve.
Twelve, so many people to agree. It was, and that, they're going to be making most of the decisions with the website. I'll just be, you know, making those decisions happen.
Just a suggestion for me.
You got it. I'll make sure they know about it.
Okay.
Being a fan on Sunday.
Even if you can't put them all.
Now, we do have some church events on, though. So if you know a church having an event, you can submit it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I would have to back up, Councilperson Williams, that people that are spending the weekend that aren't from the area that might want to go to church, I think that would be a good thing to have on there myself.
I'll make sure that.
But I know your board, you know, makes those decisions, but I feel it'd be a good thing.
I'll make sure that when I'm doing their monthly reports, that, you know, I'll be telling them what I see going on on the website, and I can also say, this is really what the council wants in my reports, so I definitely make sure they're known. I did mention what you said, I did get your email, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was, that was good stuff. Okay, we go to item number four. Thank you, ladies.
Good night.
This is the discussion, the One Rake at a Time Rainbow River Restoration Project. Art, are you going to lead us into this discussion?
Yeah, and then I'm going to have Michelle come up. And the first thing I wanted to say is address some of the issues that came up here in public comment. You know, people are absolutely right. The people upstream do shove stuff right in the river, and where's it go? It goes downstream, it ends up in the Lower Rainbow River. The Lower Rainbow River has the largest amount of water. It has the big mats of lingua that are suffocating everything. It has a lot of hydrola. So that's why we want to start on the bottom of the river, because that's sort of like what someone says, the low hanging fruit. That's where we get the most bang for the buck. We can go in there, we can dredge all that stuff out, dive vacuum it all out, and start planting eelgrass. And when we do that, we're going to make sure we have a two-year maintenance with the contractors that do that. So even though we're starting at the bottom, it doesn't mean that as we go up to the top, the bottom's going to become ruined again, because as we're vacuuming that out, we're not really sending anything downstream. So it's a very clean way to do it. Yes, there'll still be people upstream that will shove stuff down, but it's not going to be 30 years of accumulation. And as we go up the river, you know, one stage at a time, we're going to hit all the hotspots. So have patience, eventually we will get the whole river cleaned up, cleaned up and stabilized. Another thing is, is that in April 8th, 2019, I got a letter from the City of Dunellen. That's when we were first looking at getting grants, and it was signed by the mayor then, and I think it was also, Bill, you were on the council then, Val? And, was it you that was on the council? I remember it's on. It says, and we would like an updated version of this, I think that's one thing that would be really great. It says, "To whom it may concern, the Dunellen City Council representing the citizens of the City of Dunellen, Florida, USA, in a unanimous vote of five on April 8th, 2019, declared that it fully supported the efforts of Art Jones and his 501(c)(3) organization, One Rake at a Time, to apply for and hopefully obtain any available opportunities to help with the cleanup and restoration of the Rainbow River. The Dunellen City Council fully supports the issuances of all permits necessary for the removal of invasive weeds and algae, and replanting of native eelgrass in areas where it belongs, in order to restore fish and wildlife habitat, along with improving water clarity and reducing nutrient pollution." So it'd be great to get an updated version of that, because Michelle has discovered a grant that we can apply for, and the deadline on is coming right up. Michelle?
Hi, I'm Dr. Michelle Sevillich. There's a couple pots of money that are going to be available, that we would really like to go after, that would help fund the permitting and a pilot study. So the first one is the DEP Restore Funds. There is a pot of money for water quality projects, so we would love to have your support when I approach them, saying, hey, give us some of the restore funding. That's from the DEP Oil Spill. The legislature just opened up a special appropriations pot of money. Usually that's just one year, but they have this extra COVID relief funds, and they are allocating it out for an additional legislative appropriation. So I've got that ready to go to Representative Basula's office, and that'll be for a three-acre pilot project, plus the permits for the whole lower river, and some funds to make sure that this project, we get the outreach, we can start reaching those residents, we can do direct mailers, whatever we need to help with the education, so that people upriver know what's going on downriver. And I helped Seacrest River with a lot of these same issues, and, you know, it's amazing what just going north to north with Flyer can do in getting people on board. So those are all different avenues that we're approaching to get some funds. So any support we can get from you guys, hopefully before the 11th, is when the first grant application is due. It would go a long way, saying we have local community support, and we obviously do, there's so many people out here raking the river, and doing everything in their own backyard that they can do, but if we band together, we can get the whole river taken care of.
Can you meet that vote at the 11th?
If possible.
That's our city council meeting.
Okay. Well, we have others due later in the week, so I'll just say that we have citizen support, and with the next one, we can say we have official support, so.
You have anything else in your presentation, Art?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, let's just respond to, you're asking for an updated letter that's similar to the letter we did in 2019, right?
Yes, sir.
And you need it by the 11th?
If possible.
Or sooner, that's fine.
Ms. Odom, how does that, is that something if council wanted to do by consensus, could it be done this evening, or do we have to schedule that for our coming council meeting?
That would be up to you, if you all want to see it and vote on approving the letter. I mean, I don't know how else, I don't have a letter to put in front of you tonight. Well, if we just said the letter that's in front of him now, if we duplicate the letter for 2019? I mean, that's just a suggestion, our attorney can tell us if that's okay. I mean, I can read you the letter.
Well, the timing works out well. If we, by consensus instructed you to do it, and then you present it to us Monday.
But they need it by Monday, not by Tuesday.
Is Monday evening okay?
If you guys say you're going to approve it next week, that's, that's fine, yes, we will take it, yes.
I mean, if it's that time sensitive, let us know. If it's okay for us to officially do it Monday at our meeting that's coming up.
Or is it better if you get it to put in the mail on Monday morning?
If we can have it sooner, that would be better, but like I said, we have two other applications coming up afterwards, so I'll definitely have it by the ones that are due on 15th. But we'd like to know if there's some restore funding, and ask for, we're asking for 1.7 million and change, which would get us three acres and a permit.
Ms. Kennedy, do you have any issue with my consensus, just duplicating that letter from 2019?
I have no problem.
So I think you have a consensus to do that.
So I can just duplicate this letter, and I can actually get it out to them tomorrow?
And I just need to make sure I'm around to sign it?
You gonna be around tomorrow?
I will be around, I really, that's what I am thinking, yes.
Okay, that's.
Okay, yeah, that's fantastic, thank you very much. The next thing I want to do is, like, we did for the tourist development council there, Discover Dunellen. If Mandy could bring up our website, Michelle's been working on that a lot, and we would like to, onerakeatatime.org. And we can just, I just wanted to breeze through that briefly, so you get a feel of what's there, because it's always changing, putting more and more stuff up there. And it will answer questions, and will also give the audience a little bit more familiarity. There it is. Michelle, you want to explain how we've got the website working? Mandy will follow it along.
Perfect, thank you. So, as Art said, it's a work in progress, there's so much more that's going up. But you can read from, if you click on the "About Us," it has every chronicle article that's ever been written about One Rake at a Time. You can see it goes back over a decade. Art's been on this for a really long time, and we're trying to chronicle that history, right? We're not just starting, you know, from scratch, you know, we have a long history doing this. So I think if you keep going all the way to the bottom, there's like every news article down there. If you click on "The Restoration Project," it will walk you through what our plan is. And it starts with, you know, there's a map in the middle, where that shows the different phases that we're going to do. This is a process we're using, so if you click on the "Remove or Plant or Restore," this is how we plan on addressing the whole river. As we said, we're going to start at the lower river, because if we're going to go after these really big pots of money, we're more likely to get funding for the worst of the worst, you know, telling them we need to start at the head springs, it's beautiful. No one needs, no one will understand why we want to start at the head springs and work our way down. We start at the worst spot, and then we move our way up. Everyone said the same thing about Kings Bay, 600 acres, you know, why are you doing these canals? Everything's just going to wash back in and settle, and it's going to be terrible. It worked fine. Those canals are beautiful. So we're going to do the same process here. So you get rid of the worst, and then you work your way up the river. And as you go further up, you just might need a spot cleaned, you know, just help with some of the invasive species. But it's that lower river that, you know, study after study has really shown us is impaired. And if you hover over Restoration, you can see every scientific study that I can find about the Rainbow River, and we've linked all of them there. So if you want to read the swim plan, or about the map, or the TNDLs, we have everything right there for you guys. It's pretty heavy-duty reading, but we wanted to make sure that we were using the best available science for answering any questions. News, the videos, that's all really simple. After hearing some of the comments about all the stuff washing down the river, the "Get Involved" tab, I'll be sure to update with ways people can help, and that's everything from, you know, cleaning your own backyard, and not pushing things down, being good neighbors, you know, trash pickup. All of that is ways to get involved, volunteering with One Rake, and then obviously donate. We're always raising funds. We've had some wonderful donors step up. That's really helping us get this project off the ground. And it shows commitment, right? The legislature is going to allocate funds to communities that want to see this succeed. They're not going to risk their funds on a project that may or may not get finished. But if we have all of these stakeholders that are donating their time, donating their money, really, really involved, coming to these meetings, that shows that we really want to see this project succeed, and that's going to help us get funding from all of these state agencies and organizations, so. Again, it's always involving. We're putting up all of the former WYKETV shows, so there's some really great stuff.
Now, if you hit the videos at the top there, Mandy. I love this, because, see, even there, we've got the city council meetings, so that people who couldn't come can get to see what we talked about with the One Rake at a Time project. So boom, it's up there, and then scroll down, and you're going to see more videos, so it's really amazing. I guess it's going to the right chunk.
Either one, you can scroll, or there's had ones that, there's so many videos I'm starting up. Do it by ear, so you can jump to the ear you want.
So we're getting it more user-friendly, especially for people with their phones, because you know with their phones, they just scroll, scroll, boom, 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 boom. And so they can hit all these little videos, and, you know, it's just amazing what happened down there in Kings Bay, yeah. So when you get a chance, go through them, you know, it's amazing. When I look back on some of it, I can't amaze, it amazes me what we got done. It really is. We've got the TV shows on there, and it's just amazing. So that's it. I mean, we're moving it forward. We've gotten some good support from the community already. I've got people out there in our canal cleaning it up. We're continuing to pull hydrola out of there on a weekly basis. My neighbor next door, who has been there for like 30 years, actually started cleaning. I couldn't believe it. He actually pulled out hydrola, pulled it off. So it's catching on. It's a good thing.
Okay, Art, a question or two, and counsel my other comments. You've now made your presentation a time or two, and I think I have my arms surrounded. So what you're really needing or hoping from the city is some sort of contribution for the study, to get the study going, is that what you're?
Yeah, any kind of, you know, the letter of support is fantastic. If the city gives a monetary contribution, we can put that in the budget. That's a big positive step in the right direction when Tallahassee looks and says, well, the city's got skin in the game. You know, they're not just wanting us to do everything for them, they're participating also. When we started in Crystal River, the City of Crystal River gave us $25,000. They're like, Art, we love it, here's $25,000 to help you, to help me get another barge, we're cleaning out that lingua. And the county said, wait a minute, we want to help too. And I didn't even ask them for any money. They called me up and said, come in, we want to talk to you about it. We went in there, talked about it, they gave us $225,000. Got it going. And then Swiftmont said, wait a minute, you're not leaving us out. They gave us another, they matched the county, $225,000. So it started to steamroll, and then Charlie Dean gave us $100,000. Then they gave us the pilot project, was it 1.6 million from Tallahassee? So I'm just following the same playbook that happened. I didn't even realize there was a playbook back then, it just happened. But now I'm like, okay, this makes sense, you know, because the city is, you know, it's the people. We live right here, we live on the water. I see that every day on the water, and, you know, so I see this stuff coming down, sometimes I see it in my window, and I run down and grab it, pull it out, you know. And there's people all along the river that have been doing that for years, and it's just time to gel it, bring it together, and, you know, make it happen. Right now Tallahassee is very interested in water projects. They've had some great success in Kings Bay, and they like that, they like success. So they've allocated another 50 million for springs restoration projects, and the hardest thing to do is to find the contractors that can do it. People that you really trust. And we trust State Shoreline, they've done amazing work. And these are local guys, they get in there, they dive. And these are local guys. They get in there, they dive, you know, they do all that diver vacuuming. It's tough work. But they do it as carefully as possible and preserve, you know, all the wildlife we can. And then we get that muck out and then prepare that ground for planting that ylgrass. And that's gonna be the key to success. The ylgrass will outcompete the hydrilla and it will outcompete the lyndia. And it will become the dominant aquatic vegetation in the Lower Rainbow again. And as we move upstream, we'll get rid of as much of muck and hydrilla as we can and just.
All right, very good, Art. Very good. Counsel, comment or suggestions? Ms. Kenny?
I have no suggestions. I am not adept at what you're doing. But I certainly believe that you have been successful and look forward to our precious river being protected.
Ms. Williams?
Nothing but God bless you in your efforts to clean up that river. I'm pretty sure it's a project that's very well needed.
And just real quick, I happened to be Saturday on, like I told you, out on Crystal River. And we were on the sunset cruise from Plantation. My sister was in from Alabama. And the guy said something about the project over there. And I, you know, just was like, oh, you know, what do you think about it? You know, kind of, you know, just getting an opinion that he didn't know who I was. And he had nothing but glowing statements. Because I asked a few of the questions that some had asked about, does the ylgrass really stay for more than, you know, six months to a year? And he said, oh, yeah. He goes, once it's taken hold, it is just flourishing. And then I said, what about the soot or whatever, you know, floating down, you know, making more of a mess? Oh, no, that wasn't it. I mean, he just, and they even highlighted your project, you know, when we were riding by it. So it was good to get a, you know, an opinion from somebody that didn't come here specifically to support you. He didn't know why I was asking these questions. And then I told him why, of course. But it was good that I could see that it was, not that I don't believe what you're saying, but that what you were saying is true and that others support, you know, support the effort. So thank you for that.
So counsel, what I would say is what Art and his project needs is money. Are we in a position to discuss that, possibly put it on the agenda for our next meeting if we want to make a contribution?
Just as long as Jan tells us, yes, we have money. And then our attorney has to tell us that it's money that we can make, that we can donate for the good of the citizens? Of a purpose, yeah.
I mean, if we wanted to come up with $5,000, could we come up with $5,000? I think for our budget, that would be something we can do to at least show some good effort.
And let me ask you, Attorney General, while I have you, if a city council person wants to donate, is there an issue on that? Do we need to declare it if we ever vote on anything?
Well, it's a personal donation.
Right, yeah.
Personal donation, so yeah, that would just be under the standard ethics rules and as far as that goes. But you're the one making donations, so we should.
I was, I was, no, I was joking.
All right, Ms. Odom, why don't you put it on our agenda, discussion of a possible donation? We can think about it for three or four days. Jan can kind of look at the numbers and.
How much have y'all raised so far? Do you know off the top of your head?
We've got, what, $10,000 or something, a couple of pledges? And on that website, if you go all the way over to Donate and then you click down, there's actually a sponsorship page. So you can look at the different levels of sponsorship. Go all the way down, 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 down. There you go.
You can also, if you shop on Amazon, just, Amazon donates to us at no cost to you. You just bookmark this as your charity on your mobile phone, on your browser. We get checks quarterly and all you have to do is shop like you normally do. So, but yeah, we do have a sponsorship package. So, you know, for a business or anybody that wants to sponsor us.
There you go. There's a, you can click on that sponsorship proposal. And the city, you can look at that and say, hey, which sponsorship do we want to be? Because we would love to get the city of Dunellen emblem on our stuff, you know, be out there. So as we start this project, we get cleaning up, the city of Dunellen's with us. Because that's what we did in Crystal River. The Crystal River seal is on there, the Swiftmud seal is on there, the county seals are on there. It shows all the, you know, it shows the city and the people all getting involved. So, yeah, those are our sponsorship levels.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
I just have one question. Are you looking for that donation in this current year's budget or next year's budget?
I would think it would have to be in the coming budget.
Next year's budget?
Right. All right.
Unless you tell us there are funds in this budget. There are.
Give us our options.
On Monday.
On Monday, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you for your hard work.
Okay, so far, so good. We go to number five, engineer report on agreement. 2021-15, DEO, TAC, roadway condition assessment, Troy.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet tonight and be straightforward with you and tell you I am not prepared to give a presentation on the final report. But I will tell you, I do have the final report. We do have the final computer program that goes with our road conditioning report we see from the engineers. I spent about three, three and a half hours training on it yesterday and continue to train on it so I can give a proper presentation on Monday. The program is a lot more informative and useful than I anticipated it to be. So looking forward in our future road projects and our budgets, you'll see that the program is gonna offer some great assistance in making decisions. So with Counsel's approval, I'd like to carve out some time on Monday to make a proper presentation.
Okay, Mandy, put it on the agenda for Monday, please. I did go by Troy's office today to talk about some things and he showed it to me. It's quite impressive. I think it's gonna be a great addition to us analyzing our road projects. Okay, we're going to item number six. It's resolution 2022-07, amending the Blue Run Park management plan. This is Andrew.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to speak to it. Going through some of the points discussed a little bit earlier, what I do agree with is that if there is a vendor who's not operating under KP Hole anywhere on site at Blue Run Park, that is a ticketable offense. So I do want to make that clear. It's my understanding in discussing with staff and discussing with the chief, that there has not been any commercial use of the park on site since prior to three weeks ago. And so I'm not aware of any pickups on site or off site other than the KP Hole shuttle at this time. So if that's not the case, that's something that staff, you know, would need to be made aware of. But that's my understanding. What this resolution does, and the ordinance bleeds right into it. Now, this is just a change to the management plan. Two very simple changes, even though there are three changes. There is a duplicate of part of the management plan that addresses the KP Hole shuttle. So it's been put in there twice. Just incorporating the kind of requirements for signage. So that the KP Hole shuttle is required per management plan to positively identify itself as the KP Hole shuttle. The other change we discussed at the last meeting, which just prohibits bulky or heavy equipment, defined as larger than two feet on the nature trails. So the nature trails are used as they're intended as nature trails. There are limited exceptions for accessibility and administrative equipment. Anything may be preempted as well as fishing holes, since fishing is allowed in the pond there. But this would keep people from carrying equipment through Blue Run Park, either to the main parking area or from the main parking area. Part of the reason this rule has been proposed is for a number of reasons. One, of course, to primarily protect trails, also due to some of the dangerous wildlife that's been observed within the park, some of the degradation that is caused to the trails from off-site commercial traffic. And this should remedy all of that. If there are any future commercial issues, one of the things the city can do is simply address that through parking requirements on San Jose and any of the surrounding streets. But this, the current, what's been out there, it's been created by the chief as an order temporarily, has halted any kind of use. And this essentially incorporates that into the management plan as well as the ordinances to ensure protection of the park.
Counsel, any comments?
No, sir.
The only comment I had, I was pulling into the park one morning and there was a truck, it was a pickup truck. And they were parked in the parking spaces. But they had a kayak, I guess you'd call it. It was hanging off the truck and I had to be very careful not to hit it. I know they were probably getting ready to take it off and put it into the water. But to me, that was a danger as far as me driving, trying to park. It was hanging off the, but I guess there's nothing you can do about that.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Kenny?
It would just be nice if they, I mean, if they're there to use it, it would be nice if they would pull up, where the shuttle pulls up and take it off first and then park the truck. I don't know.
They should be using the delineated zones for unloading. And I do believe that there is some signage at the park that when you park a vehicle there, all the vehicle and anything hanging off the vehicle needs to be within that space. And if it is hanging off into that space, then it's my understanding, just from my recollection of seeing signage out there myself, that it is difficult. There's an issue with that.
So it's just the kayak that will take it out, over the tailgate?
But if any part of the vehicle or anything that they're hauling is, you know, extending out past that parking area, then that's a problem.
I agree with that too, with the big trucks.
Right.
Ms. Kenny?
Well, we're amending this by resolution, but it actually becomes part of the management plan. Is that correct?
That's right. The management plan doesn't require an ordinance. So this one, we've got two documents in front of us. This resolution here has gone to all the partners. Some of the comments haven't quite come back on it yet because this went out last week. But this resolution specifically amends the management plan. And then this ordinance incorporates those changes directly into the city's ordinance.
So eventually, we're going to have this in the ordinance so that there's no problem with the enforcement. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. And what has been, I think, proposed on staff is going ahead with a, if counsel's amenable to it and is good with the documents, going forward with a first reading of the ordinance contingent upon passage of the resolution. So that allows, since FTT doesn't work quite as fast as some other agencies, it allows the city to go ahead and take that first step, getting a first reading in, and then adopting the resolution prior to the second reading.
Thank you.
I'm welcome, man.
Okay, please.
Another thing that I've noticed on the trail, and I think it's kind of dangerous because that trail is getting kind of crowded with the bicyclists and the walkers, and I'm not against what they're doing, but it's a religious organization and they're sitting a little bit on the side of the trail with their racks, with their handouts, and there are two people at each end. And so I made a comment as I was going back to Blue Run Park this morning. I told a lady, I said, you might want to be careful with your rack sitting here because somebody could come along and hit it or trip, you know? I mean, it's nice what they're doing, but I just don't think they need to be that close to the trail where you have bicycles and walkers. So I don't know.
So I mean, I know it's not a commercial, commercial, but is that a commercial?
There's an exception. Commercial have to be for First Amendment activities. So that would seem to be an expressive one. But they should not be impeding any kind of a transit area. And if that becomes an issue, I make sure it's not covered right now, but there's probably something that does.
It just seems like bringing a rack or something.
Yeah, they have a rack and they have their books. And there's two people sitting at one end and two at the other end. With the racks and stuff, just on the edge, but, you know, it's getting crowded with the bicycles and walkers. So I did make a comment to the lady, I said, you need to be careful because somebody could come along and just not be paying attention to trip on that, that rack, or even bicycle.
One of the things I think I don't see addressed in the actual park rules. It may be addressed elsewhere within the city's code when it comes to paved areas, walkways and so forth. You have to look in the ordinances. But I do understand that there may be some issues going on in other parks within the city, which may necessitate taking a look at how to handle certain aspects of other parks. And if that were the case, if there need to be any specific rules of keeping, you know, any kind of a trail within the city clear, if there need to be rules that could be incorporated for, you know, any kind of walkway, right of way, so forth. So it's something that easily can be addressed even outside the Blue Run Park rules.
Thank you.
Hi, Smear? The only question I would have, Andrew, is one of the issues we had with the resolution that covered the rules and regulations of Blue Run Park before we converted it into ordinance was that had been stated by the police, the chief, that it's a little ambiguous to enforce a resolution. So if we're gonna pass a resolution determining what can or cannot be carried on a nature trail, it's only as effective as the enforcement of it.
Correct.
So if it is consistent with the policy we had previously, that the police do not have enforcement powers with a resolution, then what does this resolution accomplish if the police cannot enforce it?
Well, the police can enforce a resolution. It's, you know, an ordinance is the best way to do that, is simply say you can take it. There is enforcement power when it comes to trespassing and other things that can be paired with the resolution. And the ordinance, the existing ordinance specifically provides for the city adopting rules. The city may adopt rules by resolution. That being said, what this resolution does is it's simply a change to the management plan. The accompanying ordinance makes those rules that are going to be put in the management plan part of the city's ordinances. So if there is somebody who's walking through and taking the equipment that should not be in the nature trails, they can be taken. Once, if council passes both the resolution and the ordinance that accompanies it.
So the ordinance will encompass what's in the resolution?
Exactly. The ordinance is identical language to the resolution. The reason that there are two documents is simply to put it into the plan. And so it becomes part of the overall plan. But it's also, now, not all rules need to go into the plan first. But in this case, it's going in there for a number of reasons, since it's clearly a new policy in Blue Run Park and because it regulates the signage on the, on the existing shuttle, which has a contract with, with the county. And we have an interlocal with the county. So if that is gonna be a rule, we're putting it in the plan.
Because I think we all will agree with what we've been dealing with, the ability to enforce is really critical. It has to be enforced. If we're gonna pass it, it has to be enforced. And the police have to be empowered to do that. So as long as that, if there's no question that the police will have the ability to enforce this, then we're good.
You know, if we, on that second one, we're just talking about the resolution right now, but these topics, they both go together. They're hand in hand. If we take a look at the ordinance and you look at lines 177 to 180, or pardon me, actually, it's lines 151 to 157, which is the trail rule, and that's added on as W to the list of A through B, the park rules in Blue Run Park. So it's a rule that is just as strong and forceful as all of the other rules within Blue Run Park currently.
Ms. Kenny?
We have been working on this, as you know, for a very long time and we've had a lot of expense involved in it. So I would hope that we will get this codified. We have, we have issues in terms of codification because we know that it is expensive to go ahead and get something in the UNICODE. But this in particular, I think we need to address.
It would be codified. I just don't know the exact date. I don't believe the new Blue Run Park ordinance has been codified yet. I didn't see it on UNICODE.
It's, no, we haven't done that supplement yet.
But it would be for the end of the fiscal, right? For the end of the fiscal year at some point?
This one, those will be codified next year.
Okay, any other discussion?
They're posted to the, they're posted to UNICODE. They're available on UNICODE's site. site, they're just not incorporated into the code until they're actually codified.
Good summary, council, thank you. What do we do with this now, is this, what does council do? Do we put this on the agenda for passage?
For Monday for first reading.
For first reading, okay.
And the resolution will come aboard you in August.
First reading.
You would pass the resolution first and then have final reading of the ordinance?
That's right. So what we'd be looking at is the first reading on Monday, and again, we're just wanting to give FCT a bit more time on the resolution, because the ordinance is dependent upon the resolution. But getting started with the ordinance first, and then assuming we don't have any issues with FCT, we don't expect that, we've already gotten comments back from OGT, which is now been renamed to a different agency, but from the city's partners. Then in August, as Manny said, it would be, the resolution would be first and then a second reading.
Okay.
Based on, if there's no changes.
All right, so it'll be on the agenda Monday, correct?
Just the ordinance for first reading.
First read, okay, thank you. Now we go to number seven?
Will you just pass that?
Is that also included?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions on the ordinance or anything in there, I don't have anything else to address.
Also, what was in there was the requirement that the shuttles be identified properly when they enter into the park, so that's, okay.
Yes, sir.
So we're done with six, seven, that will be on the agenda for Monday. Now we're at number eight, I'm looking very much forward to this, I know Ms. Smith has put a lot of time into this. Boat launch fee program, Ms. Smith, number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give council something to take a first glance at. I'm still in discussions with these companies, just to kind of fine tune the parts and pieces, but I did receive four responses. Premier Parking still has an option to present, to further present, which is in process. The plan I've taken is, I know council is concerned about strictly a phone app for parking, for payment of a boat launch fee, and a kiosk, a kiosk was suggested. What I've approached these companies on is both options.
Mandy, can you blow that up? I know we...
I'm sorry, it's so small, it's just a whole...
I can't get it all in there, but I can blow it up and kind of move it back and forth.
So I've kind of approached these companies with, can you provide us with both options? We have people waiting in line, some want to pay at a kiosk, some want to use their phone, get paid so they can just drive right out to launch their boat. So they are presenting both for council to take a look at and decide if that's something that you may want to ever take. It was described to me that the older population, which I fall into, prefer kiosks, the younger ones prefer the app, but the ones in the middle don't like, they have too many apps on their phones already, so they don't want to download them. So there is one option for older companies that is actually using a text feature on your phone, no app to download, everything is done via text. So I'm still putting this together, you can see the costs that have been presented so far in, on the screen, it's really the last column, but it kind of, you know, it's on the expensive side, but with just a straight kiosk, you're looking at $22,000, $31,000, $13,000 for the last two companies. But there are other options that have been presented, one company is looking at a barrier gate. And I'll have all these packets.
What would you use?
A barrier gate.
Oh.
Where if a kiosk is put, where there's a stop sign right now, right next to the boat ramp, if a kiosk is placed there and a barrier gate is put up, then the voter is more or less forced to pay, no, just scurrying right on through. And it's, it can provide a more orderly flow, also back off traffic. So these are just things to consider, and again, I will present these packets in their entirety and these proposals, but I do have more questions for the companies. So I'm not ready to make a final presentation this time, because it was stated, we've got to get this right.
That's right.
And I've spoken with these companies to say that, you know, we need to have an ordinance to implement this program, which takes two readings, but my first inclination is, we can get the ordinance prepared, implement a program, do fees via a resolution if Andrew is okay with that, and we can still possibly have something in place by October 1st. So my goal is, the same, of course, as yours, is to try and have something implemented October 1st. Again, it depends on how long it takes to move the equipment and get everything set up. I will need to have Troy involved from an aspect, if there is a wireless option to run a kiosk versus having to plug into our power source and what's needed. So there are some things to work out that I've just recently discovered, we have to address. But again, we want to do it right, I want to present everything in its entirety and give you multiple options.
No, that would be next month?
That's my goal, is to have that finalized so that you can really have a good discussion on this.
I would really appreciate those that are envoating, that do this, if we could get input from them, what system they like and what they prefer. Maybe the word will get out, when we put it on the agenda, we'll get some input. I know myself, if I pulled up with my boat trailer, I just want to put my credit card in a kiosk, pay it, get my slip, put it on the windshield, and I'm done with it. I don't want to have to get my phone out and have to deal with that. I'm from that age that I can do that, but I would just prefer the other way.
My thought is, if you have both options, it may move people a little quicker. Like you're in front, you go to a kiosk, the person behind you, who is okay using a phone, already is paid, they're just waiting for you to finish up your transaction.
Sure, well, that's the way it is in a grocery store, right?
Right.
Right, and you have either way, you can do it.
So if we can offer something like that, and there is one company that will provide a pay-by-text, there's another one, it's just a 4% fee, it's tapped on, to say our fee is $10, they add 4%, and they collect that. So there are just, this wasn't all apples to apples, it was apples to oranges to grapes to grapefruit. And so it really got confusing for me. So I, and having just received these, I put out a request to a lot of companies, I went out on the internet, I was filling out every, you know, website I could fill out, please contact me, and I did have four. Now, one, three are out of state, one is local, one is Ocala. The Ocala company, and they asked that I, you know, relay this to you, they are supporters of Main Street, they're sponsors of Main Street, and so they're, they really are looking forward to partnering with Danell.
Do they do both? Do they do the credit card and the app?
Yes, they do. And it's not an app, it's via text.
Oh, okay.
So you text a number, you put in your information, your credit card information, your license plate information, and you pay. But there is no app to...
You realize there's people sitting in the audience right now, right now, there are in the audience that do not text.
Absolutely, that's why you have a kiosk. It's either, either you go maybe just with the kiosk, because that's kind of what I'm hearing is the more comfortable payment method. But I've kind of looked at it as, let's speed up the flow if we can, and offer both. Of course, depending on what the cost is and the impact to the city's revenues, but with only having one boat ramp and a possibility of speeding up the flow, and really the only time-consuming thing would be actually launching a boat, and somebody, you know, having experience launching a boat and holding up traffic. But let me present, you know, everything I come across and open it up for discussion and see which way you all prefer to go.
Yes, go ahead. Just real quick, and you just said something that I just had a thought on. I know it might be staff that can answer this, and maybe chief, but have we ever kind of walked at, I'm trying to, the age group of who's coming in and breaking the votes?
I was asked that question, and I couldn't answer it.
There are a lot of very old people driving boats up that, but I'm dead serious.
It sounds to me like it's a work in progress.
It is.
And as long as we are keeping in mind that, which I think we would, what is going to be most comfortable for the demographics that we have, and more people that will be using it, which would be beneficial. But I appreciate the fact that you are speaking at the end.
That's what I was trying to find out.
And if we can do both, then you've served the entire demographic.
That's right.
Yeah, I think that's...
The visitors as well as the residents.
And the timing, Jan, is what we discussed, we didn't want to implement this on the 4th of July, right? So I wanted to do this in the off-season, so we have to do it.
Ideally, you know, the month of October would be ideal. But again, you know, we have to look at, you know, the supply chain and the equipment, where it's coming from. One company can get it here almost immediately because it's all local, others, it has to be shipped in, so I just, depends on which company you choose. I don't know if all of them can make a presentation, I know I have asked, and at least a few of them can come here and make a presentation to you all if you'd like. I haven't asked for references, I haven't gotten that far yet, but I know that's very important. So again, this is a work in progress, because I just received quotes this past week. So I've put together, put this together on the fly, trying to interpret the quotes the best I can. That's why this is only a draft, and I ask that you please do not hold me to this firm cost until I firm up what these quotes are really representing.
We could have a presentation or two, or Mandy, you could actually invite a representative to the building, and any individual councilman that would like to meet with them individually and ask them some questions, they could do that too. You know, you can say they're going to be here from noon till 2:00, anybody on council that would like to come by, and, you know, keep everybody separate. So I think it would be, it would be good, either get presentations with the companies, you know, better kind of purse it out for us, you know, and get your three best to focus on that.
Okay, I will do that. So you're looking at the, like, the top three out of, right now, the four?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith, are you finished?
I'm so sorry, I have more information for you right now, but timing was everything, between budget and trying to get the quotes. I was supposed to have them by the end of last week, and they just kind of tripped.
Okay, we're moving forward, we're on number nine, discussion of form DR-420, Certification of Taxable Value 2022. I hear, see taxable, that sounds like it's yours, Ms. Smith.
That is mine. This is the very start of your budget process. There is a requirement that council adopts the proposed mileage rate. The proposed mileage rate will be what is advertised on the trim notice that goes out for your public hearings. The property appraiser has certified the City of Danell's taxable value as a whole, and if you look at line number six, basically, our taxable value is 212.9 million. Line number six, current year adjusted taxable value. All these amounts that are on this form kind of play a part in formulas, where it gets down to, Mandy, if you go down to line 16, line 16, all the amounts up at the top are from the property appraiser. Then it works down to this section where line 16, a current year rollback rate is calculated. A rollback rate equates to, if you would propose 6.0912 mils, it's going to bring in the same amount of revenue as our current fiscal year. That's what you would adopt if you didn't want to have a tax increase. I have currently prepared a budget for you all at 6.5 mils. That is typically what I do, I start with the current mileage rate, unless I'm directed otherwise, which I haven't been. And I'm able, right now, to keep that mileage rate at 6.5 and fund everything in advance. I need you to keep in mind that I don't have all the revenues yet, and we don't have all the expenses. But hopefully, the estimates that are in this budget that'll be presented on the 20th are sufficient enough to cover everything, and maybe even walk away with a little surplus that can go into a reserve or go into a contingency amount for council. So with this first form, which must be submitted no later than August 1st, August 4th, you're adopting a proposed mileage rate, and you're setting the dates of your public hearings for September. Your proposed mileage rate, you can set pretty much any rate you want, you cannot go higher as we progress. So what has been done in the past, there's been a proposed mileage rate of 7 mils, that gives a little bit of wiggle room in case expenses that are unknown at this time maybe go through the roof, and you all can't, don't see maybe where we can cut expenses any more than we already have. It just allows for some movement. But the goal is, unless I'm directed otherwise, to come in with a budget at 6.5 mils. But because you can't go higher as we progress, you need to set a mileage rate that you're comfortable with, that you feel we can work with. Now whether that's 7 mils, a 6.5 rollback rate, that's entirely up to you. Now, I know I have not presented a proposed budget to you all, so you can really see what's in there. The departments have submitted their wish lists, we've had to make a couple adjustments on the capital side, but on the operating side, we've been able to fully fund what's been submitted based on some estimates I have done. I've received a couple of those unknown revenues, and it's about 50/50, some have come in higher, some have come in lower, but overall, with the three or four that I've just received, we've added an additional $10,000 to the budget over my conservative estimates, so that's a good thing. So we're asking you to propose a mileage rate, let's get this certified, and then we just continue to move forward throughout the rest of the budget season. Now, at your public hearing, you'll set a tentative mileage rate, which possibly at that time, you'll, your tentative mileage rate will be 6.5 mils. So you've gone from your 7 mils to your 6.5. And then we go into our final budget hearing, where you adopt your final mileage rate. Again, each time you adopt a mileage rate, you cannot go higher, you can only go lower.
All right. I've been through this rodeo four times now, and...
We stayed on that road.
I remember we always seemed to start off at 7, but the goal would get down to 6.5.
My only real concern right now is property insurance. I don't know what's going to happen with that. I've been hearing things from a personal standpoint, that insurance is going through the roof. Hopefully ours won't, but I have, I've estimated a 10% increase, and that has typically been too high. It's always come in at about 3% or 4%.
What would be, what would be the number if there was a 10% increase?
I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head.
How many zeros does it have attached to it?
That I don't know, but I'm afraid to look.
I mean, mine double, mine are most double personally at my house.
Yeah, everything's going up. And we would probably go out for it, you know, if it increased too much, we would need to go out and look to see if we could find a better price, but...
So this is just a report with no action needed?
The action is on Monday... The action is on Monday, you know, you decide on the mileage rate that you, you want to certify your taxable value at, and of course, the public hearings are pretty much a given in September. On the calendar is, I believe, the 12th and the 26th of September are your public hearings.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by council? Vice Mayor?
Gina, are you clear on what you need Monday?
I need a proposed mileage rate.
I mean, if I may, I mean, I began, I've kind of done this rodeo this time a few times and back in the day a few times. And I know we've always historically, because, I mean, you never know if there's another COVID waiting to get us, or a hurricane, or any of those things. Kind of got the good, got the good, got the good. But I, I think going at the seven, and then we can work our way back, which we never ever want, seven. That's not any of our goals, just to make sure the public is quite aware of that. Because I mean, we have to pay as well on our taxes. So, so, you know, it only benefits us to keep coming lower as we can. So I would recommend for on Monday night, putting a, a motion for, you know, setting the mileage for seven and letting the whole world know that, of course, that is not our intention to work that high. But if that's a council consensus, I will prepare this form to reflect seven mils. And at the bottom line, line number 27, reflects what that tax increase would represent. Right.
If a seven mil is, is.
Let's have some council comments, Ms. Ken.
I would like to take some time to get some advice from people who know more about it than I do before I would want to make a consensus.
I'd still like to go ahead and get it on the agenda for Monday night at seven, and then we can vote on it. And that way, you'll have some time to sit down with Jan, and, I mean, it's the same thing we've done, and that, that means it's tried, but it's, it's worked in the past.
A seven mil would, I would, would equate to a 14.92% tax increase if council adopted in September, seven mils.
And that's not what our goal is?
No.
We know that.
Right. So all this is, all this is, Ms. Kenny, just getting on the agenda, and then we can just.
On the agenda, just not with consensus. That's correct.
Yes.
Nothing final. Nothing final. Okay, I'm, I'm all for putting it on the agenda at that.
And Jan, if, if you've got those numbers, like, as the numbers come in, it looks like we're going to get a windfall of, like, I'm just going to make up a number, $40,000, let's say. Would go into, like, a 6.4? Could you kind of tell me what, like, a 6.4 would kind of come in at? You know what I'm saying?
I can do 6.4. I've got a mileage rate table that I've prepared, which starts at six mils.
Right.
Okay, and goes up to our statutory cap of 10. I did not include 6.4, but I can.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just for, you know, like you said, we already are looking at $10,000 more than what you thought, so I just.
Well, that's in the revenue estimates.
Right.
My estimates, I estimated state revenues maybe would increase 4%. A couple of them increased a little more, a couple of them decreased. So the offset, now, we're waiting on a couple more big ones. I don't know what they're going to come in at. So, but I can show you whatever you would like to see.
Just.
So 6.4?
Well, I think the, the point may be that, let's say, we adopted the seven, which we're not, that that would come out to everybody that you're going to get a 14% tax increase.
That's correct.
That would not swallow.
No.
Real well. Okay. So the, the question then becomes, if we adopt 6.5, which we're currently having, what would be the tax increase at 6.5?
6.7%.
So it'd be a 6%.
Uh huh.
Okay. So then the question that Vice Mayor is kind of probing is, can we go under 6.5 and still finance what we're trying to finance?
Possibly. Until we get further on in the budget process, I can't say we could finance everything without cuts.
And I was just saying.
But again, this is just our proposed mileage rate. It's your final. It's not what you have said, okay, everybody's going to pay seven mils. This is only to work toward a final mileage rate that would be adopted in September. You just have to keep in mind, if something comes in that you all want to fund, if you go, if you set your proposed too low, that means that, okay, we're going to have to cut elsewhere in the budget to be able to fund a project that you all would want to see. And again, when we get into more of the, of the budget workshops, that's when all this is going to get fleshed out.
So the rollback rate, which for those that may be confused on that, that is the percentage of mileage that would keep your taxes exactly what they were last year.
Yes.
And that's 6.09?
6.0912.
Okay.
So zero tax increase.
Okay.
And that, and that, and that you can adopt in September. Your hands are not tied at this point, except you can't, wouldn't be able to go higher. Whatever you propose, you just can't go higher.
Understood. So there's no downside with starting at the seven and working to the number that we're comfortable with, right?
I don't, I personally don't see any. I, I like cushions to start with. I like to be able to give you options. The lower you go to proposed, it does tie our hands, tie your hands more with what you want to see in your next year's budget.
Okay. Put that on the agenda for Monday?
Yeah.
Very good discussion.
And I will present a mileage table on Monday, which is always in the budget package that you all see, but I'll give it to you Monday, just so you can see what the different ranges are and how many votes it takes. The higher you go, the more votes it takes to pass something like that. But with, with what we do every year, the seven mils to start that we never adopt, it usually just takes a majority of the council to pass the budget.
Okay. Thank you very much. Finished? Okay, we go to item number 10, the withdrawal of agreement 2020-23 FEMA grant award for COVID-related expenses. Is that you?
That's still me. It's my name. When COVID first came out and cities and counties were losing money because people were being forced to stay home and places were closing down, FEMA had come out with a grant program to help with any shortfall and to fund certain COVID-related expenses. There, this program was a little more strict than what the city was able to take advantage of. Right around the same time, the government, the federal government came out with what they called CARES Act funding, and through Marion County, we were able to recover 100% of any COVID-related expenses that the city incurred, which equated to almost $62,000. It had to be direct COVID-related expenses. So with this FEMA grant, there was nothing for me to submit for reimbursement. And we, since the grant was still going from 2020, it's been ongoing for two years, and we don't have any more direct expenses, we need to formally withdraw from this program. Now, this will not impact any future requests for FEMA funding for a hurricane disaster or critical facility hardening or anything. This was just, just for COVID. We had another funding source, and they just need to close out this grant.
Right, put that on the consensus?
I don't have a problem.
You put it on the, the agenda, and then we can vote on it. I don't see any reason that we have to make a decision right now. I don't know enough about it.
Well, we have nothing to submit for reimbursement, so this is an open grant, but nothing to submit.
Right, it seems reasonable.
And FEMA is requiring us.
Right.
To close this out.
Right.
What, do you have, what exactly were the $62,000 that we got, that we spent? Do we have some kind of a record on?
Oh, absolutely. I got a file this thick. We had supplies. Troy had to buy extra cleaning supplies to sanitize the restrooms. We had to buy what's called PPE, personal protective equipment, masks and gloves. Salaries that were directly related to COVID activities were reimbursed, both overtime and regular salaries. With FEMA, they only covered overtime. So we, we were reimbursed for anything that was directly COVID-related. At my time to track all this was directly COVID-related. We were reimbursed at my salary and benefit level, along with everybody else's.
But that wasn't through this grant?
No, no, in fact.
We had nothing for that grant.
No, because if we hadn't been able to recover all our other expenses, I absolutely would have submitted what was eligible through FEMA, which only overtime, if it's salary-based, would have been reimbursable through FEMA. But we were reimbursed. We can't double dip.
Yeah. Right. So it's funny, it, it's a no, I mean, it's, we can't use it. They, they're requiring us to close this out with FEMA.
That doesn't, that doesn't mean they wouldn't necessarily open up another grant funding program if we had another, you know, major shutdown because of COVID. But for this particular funding opportunity, they're trying to close out anything that isn't being spent.
So we can put this on the consent agenda if any individual councilman wants to pull it off, they can at the Monday meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. You okay with that, Ms. Kenny? So if you think about it and you want to re-discuss it?
I'm going to have to come in and talk to Gina.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Okay. Excellent. Good, good report. Thank you, Jan. Are you, are you finished?
I think I'm done.
Okay, we're at number 11 right now. Mandy, I'm going to let you pick out the department heads in the order that you want them to report.
Okay, before we get started, I meant to address this at last month's meeting. You had made an individual request that department head reports do move up toward the beginning of the agenda after board reports. We did that. I needed to get the consensus of council if we were going to make that a permanent change, and I just, it got passed me last month. So if the council would rather see department head reports at the end of the meeting or at the beginning of the meeting, I just need some direction on how we want to.
Well, the reason I suggested that, talking with some of the department heads, that this is going to be a relatively short meeting, but sometimes our meetings are into the three hour, three and a half hour, and we're just getting to department heads. And I felt, talking with some of them, that they have important things they're wanting to go over with council, and we're all shuffling our papers, getting ready to leave. So my suggestion was, rather than putting it that deep in waitance in a meeting, to put it up forward slightly, because their reports to us possibly are some of the most important things we're going to hear that night.
And we did, we did that last month, and it seemed to work. So I just, you know, going forward, I just want to make sure I have everybody's blessing to do that or keep it the way it is, either way.
Just my suggestion, this isn't one that.
I agree with your suggestion. I think that, you know, it's very important, especially with the planning commission and some of the reports that we need upfront.
Well, we're going to have anything to do with the planning commission. This is, this is the department heads.
Oh, I'm sorry. The department heads, well, I'd really like to hear what they had to say, too. Sorry.
That's all right.
I'm fine with this.
With what? Change sheet?
The problem with me is.
Change sheet?
For being a front row.
Okay.
That's why I'm. I'm going to put it on after board reports. You'll get your department head reports.
Okay.
And that way also the public can hear.
That's it.
But we're holding it to, we're holding it to the three-minute rule, right?
Yeah. Well, mine, mine should have been about 15 minutes, so I'll slide. Just to keep.
Okay. Mandy, thank you for bringing that up.
I'll start because I have some important stuff. Monday, you will have the proclamation before you for the election. I have, we have it here. This is where the council will be declaring the November 8, 2022 city council election. Obviously, the three seats that will be open are two, three, and four. The qualifying period for the election will begin at noon on August 22nd and end at noon on August 26th, which is a Friday. So I made sure we put it in there that we will be here at city hall on that Friday, August 26th, from 8:00 AM until noon for people to come in and qualify. There is a process for qualifying. You have to have 10 petitions signed by electors of the city of Danone, so they have to be registered to vote in the city. That would have to accompany the other qualifying paperwork. There is a qualifying fee of $45, which is established by our charter, plus 1% of council's annual salary, which is statutory that gets paid to the elections commission. All $18, yeah.
Can you deduct it from my page?
So everything that's necessary and needed to qualify is been published on the website. If you'd like, I can show you a, where that can be found.
I'll be there.
I think I got that all.
Pretty difficult, I don't know.
Yes.
And Ms. Odom, if someone has questions about the election, who in the office is the point person for them to see?
Mary Michelle. So we put it in big red letters here so people know if they say, oh my gosh, the 26th is on Friday, city hall's closed, you know, we will be here on Friday. So it goes into a little bit about what the qualifications are to run for city council. Like I said, just qualified elector of the city. And then over here, you got election schedules and qualifying information. And again, we've got our big red statement there. So, you know, here's the election package content, which includes the schedule. That would probably be a good thing. So you could go here and you could click on anything that's lit up in blue is a direct link to that schedule or that document. You've got Marion County Voters' Guide, Marion County Candidate Handbook, Election Laws of Florida, so all that's available there. And then this is an important one, the election schedule. So our proclamation will be adopted on Monday. It will get published in the newspaper. Some of this stuff, when you look at, is for the candidates, but some of it is also for our benefit so that we don't miss some of the deadlines that we have to meet. So, so here's the open qualifying candidates, 8/22, closed qualifying candidates, 8/26. Some important things that candidates need to remember is there are deadlines to accept contributions, which we've outlined down here, 11-3. So this is important both for staff and the candidates to understand, like, the date. So if you're out campaigning and there's a, the, there's a deadline for you to register to vote, so you're talking to somebody and they say, oh, I'm not a registered voter in Danone, but I live here, then on the schedule, you can go to the schedule and say, well, you have to, you know, here's your deadline to register to vote, which I think is October the 10th or something like that. So that's an important schedule that's out there for everyone's reference. Political signs is very important as well. I cannot urge people enough to read the codes on political signs because it is so easy to slip up and the disclaimers that have to be on those. I can tell you from many years of experience, if your political sign is locked. I can tell you from many years of experience, if your political sign is not perfectly correct and you have an opponent, they will point it out, and it can get, ah! So, there's a lot to review and learn, but we're here too to help guide you. And so, if anybody has any questions about what's on the website or what they have to do to qualify, this introduction packet, this is like my little bible, my little two-page bible here, it just spells everything out, from beginning to the qualifying period, exactly what forms you have to have, what you have to turn in, when you can turn it in. You can actually declare your candidacy now by filing the form DSDE9 because you can't start collecting campaign contributions until you do that. You have to file that form, you have to open your campaign account, your qualifying fee has to be paid from your campaign account, which is very important. Some people have walked in here with cash, I want to pay my qualifying fee, and can't do that. So, this is a very important document too. I would probably point people to this first, is this election introduction. So, there it is. If anybody has any questions, we're here and we'll help you the best we can to get through it. Disclaimer, we cannot help you fill out forms, we can't tell you how to fill out forms. We can look at them and say, this might, you might need to rethink this or look at this, and this might be wrong, but we are not in a position as the qualifying officer to assist at that level.
That first form, can we fill that online? I pulled that up, that D-
The DSDE9, it should, because that link is directly to the state's website.
Yeah, because I tried to open it up and I couldn't, I had to actually Google it. It wouldn't open from that.
Oh, I'll check that out, I can't open it either. Well, here's another, here's another place. Here we go, here's the DSD104. So, here, there it is.
Yeah.
So, there it is, and I think, yeah.
Where did you put that, I'm sorry?
That was at the bottom of this page, it's just a qualifying form. So, we've got candidate information, qualifying forms, and helpful websites. So, these are all the forms that you would have to complete unless something isn't applicable. The DSDE19 affidavit of undue burden, that's only if you claim that you cannot pay the 1% election assessment. You still have to pay the qualifying fee, but you can complete an affidavit of undue burden and you may be excused from paying the 1% election assessment, which is $18. The nickname affidavit, you may or may not need if you go by a different name than what your legal name is.
By the Dow Dow.
Right. If you wanted to put on your, if you want to be listed on the ballot as Dow Pal, like you said, you'd have to fill out a nickname affidavit. And then, the candidate petition checklist is good because the petitions, it's very particular, the date, when you collect the petitions, the signatures have to be verified through the supervisor of elections. People have been known to date the petition using their birthday, that's not gonna fly.
Say what?
They've dated the petition using their birthday.
Dated it using the birthday?
Yes.
Listen, if it's happened, I've seen it. I had one year with Donald's signature, they weren't gonna accept my own husband's signature.
So, there's a lot to do. They're very particular about the petitions, and those are all verified by the supervisor of elections. I don't have any say-so over that. I get them, I send them to them, they verify it or not. But other than that, everything else on that list has to be completed as part of the qualifying process. So, that's out.
Okay.
Long time.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. For any of you that may be interested, that looked really complicated. It's not that bad, and Mandy and Michelle are very good about kind of pointing in the right direction, so you get a, I know Mandy has been very helpful in the past. So, don't let all that discourage you. It looked like, whoa, but it's not that bad.
It's real.
Okay.
It looks good.
Yeah. Ms. Odom, who's next?
Go ahead, Troy.
Nothing major to report tonight, other than just a couple of updates. Mandy, I don't know if you planned on mentioning anything about it, but the EV chargers for Duke?
Oh, you want to?
Okay. My last meeting was onsite with them on June 28th. They still agree with the two sites that we have chosen, Daysman Park and Arnie Mills Bar, and everything's a good with it, but they're having problems with the supply chain. So, now it looks like the charging units themselves may not get here until late this year, possibly January, but we're still on the list, everything's still a good. Okay? And then, found out today, late this afternoon, that there is a shortage, a statewide shortage that has come in effect on asphalt. So, depending on who the contractors are and where their suppliers are from or what projects are pending, is whether or not asphalt will be made available in a timely manner. So, we could be looking at delays on the free paving projects that we have currently out. However, I have not heard anything in response from the primary contractor that's working over in Ohio Street, Cedar Street. They do have their own asphalt manufacturing, and they do have the supplies as far as we know. So, there should not be any further delays with that project, and they should be in town by late next week, early, if not Monday following. The same with Blue Cove. That contractor does buy their materials from suppliers, but we have not heard that there is gonna be any delay in them starting at Blue Cove. But we'll keep the council informed, okay? The, we found out this afternoon, because we have started the driveway entry to Blue Run Overflow Parking, and when the contractor notified the plant that he was ready for his pickup tomorrow morning, the plant setting straight, said it has been canceled. He will not be getting it tomorrow. So, it could be two to three weeks before he can get the asphalt to finish the driveway going into Blue Run Park. But it is sealed, it is constructed, it just doesn't have the asphalt on it, so.
All right. Other than that, I don't have any further updates.
Jan, I know you had a lot to say tonight, do you have anything else to say?
Give me that on my-
What you got, Georgina?
Just, good evening.
Good morning.
Almost falling asleep. Just wanted to let you all know that we already sent the advertising for the RFP, so we're waiting on the contractors to come forward, and we've had a few that are interested, have been asking questions, so we've been trying to monitor that. And then, I wanted to make a recommendation to Jan, see if we can maybe do a survey among the boat, the people that come to the dock with boats, maybe use ROTC students, because I know one very special to me that would love to get the hours in. If you guys are interested, they, you know, I can get a group together of ROTC students from high school to help with that and get some hours in that they need.
Great idea.
Get a survey.
Put the survey to see what the voters would like, the two different, the kiosk, the text, the QR code, those kind of things.
More information, the better.
And that's all for now.
Georgina, can I just get you to, and I think I've asked you already, just kind of quail some rumors, that we have not had anybody from Chick-fil-A come to the city and ask to put up a Chick-fil-A or a Wawa over there at the vacant land where Owen's Produce was, correct?
No, no. At Chick-fil-A is my favorite, so, believe me, I'll be making sure that permit is approved.
That works for me.
I've been asked twice on the trail here. I know you know what's going in there. No, I didn't know, and I actually called here from the trail to ask. And then, on the way again today, have you heard anything yet?
I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that the rumor mill can slow down.
Do you know of anything? That the Produce Tent has been told they can't set up there anymore?
I heard about it. I haven't heard of any, anything about the new owner. Hopefully, I'll hear from him soon, but-
Okay, so, right now, no one's approached?
I have not heard anything yet.
And, I mean, the Produce Tent had a permit to be there and everything like that, right?
As far as I know, yeah.
Who actually owned it while they were there?
I don't know. I think somebody out of Crystal River, but I could be wrong on that.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Saving the best for last.
Yeah, the best for last.
Oh, my knee. Uh-oh, we got a-
Uh-oh.
We got a presentation.
I promised to have you on by midnight. Been asked to, and I have looked into the parking situation on the weekends in our parking lot here, and so, believe it or not, this issue is not new. It has come up in the past, and we had a solution to it, but unfortunately, we had an election, and it was dropped during that time period when the attorney of y'all was elected. We did have a solution, and the solution is, and I'll show you the solution that we had, and it was going to work, we do believe. If you'll show the first one.
Remind me of the solution.
What we proposed is a rope fence all around where the grassy areas, and that way the cars cannot park on the grass. Citations do not work. How many citations do you think we have written? The voting season actually starts about May, but how many citations do you think we have written since beginning of the year?
Sixty.
More.
Really?
We have written 77 citations for parking here. January through May was 55 of them. So, we write a lot of citations. I myself was in Cedar Key, we wanted to eat, cannot have a boat behind your vehicle. I decided that it was worth the 50 bucks to park, and I did, because I have a nice vehicle, I have a nice boat, and I was hungry, and so was my guest. Fortunately, nobody wrote me a ticket, but I was willing to pay the 50 bucks. So, citations is not the answer. What is the answer is, and Troy and I have discussed it many times in the past, like I said, it was a given thing to do, but as we know, when the elections change, a lot of things change. So, it's my suggestion to the council that we reconsider that, go to the next slide, please. As you can see, it's just a rope, it's on a river. You see these all over the place, they're nice, they're not expensive, and the main thing is, the way we would put them in the ground, if a vehicle did hit them, they would be movable, they're not put in by concrete or anything like that. So, we, people that does hit them or back into them, they have some give to them, natural. You can see they can be fairly decorative, but inexpensive. So, that is my suggestion for the rules to help with the parking. That is, summer is on us, more and more people are on the river, and this would eliminate a lot of problems here at City Hall, as we have discussed in the past.
And she, I know you and I talked briefly on Sunday the other day about, I received an email from, and the only thing that I think might be an idea, because she wasn't aware, now, I know we have a sign someplace that shows, that says additional parking over here, but I don't even know if we, Mike, and I hate having to do signs upon signs, but maybe do like a diagram sign that shows, you know, you are here, parking over there, almost like a diagram, let them see where other parking is as well.
And what's up with y'all?
I know, but again, I'm just saying at the boat slip, it might be a thing to do that people can know that there's extra parking over there. Can I move here, Troy? What's wrong?
In my opinion, the signs do not work. They haven't worked anywhere in the city.
Even with like a diagram?
Yes.
So, not to interrupt your taking time, but like Anita was talking, the councilwoman Williams was talking earlier about cars parking at Blue Run Park with the kayaks hanging out. Those signs have pictures of kayaks hanging out of them that says, don't do this, and it tells them overflow parking on San Jose Boulevard with arrows directing them around the parking lot to San Jose Boulevard. I got a picture of a pickup truck that ran over the parking curb and hit the sign, and the excuse was, when we were trapping Alvin Anderson's excuse for it was, my truck's too big and I don't want to get a ticket. And he hit the sign and said, don't do it. We have three signs here on the parking lot that say overflow parking around the corner, and they hit a arrow, but we can freshen up.
Well, no, I don't want to grease, I was just thinking maybe change it to a picture instead of a-
One other thing, our voting, June and July, we wrote 57 citations on the river. So.
And y'all saved, and y'all were a part of the group that found those two pits the other day?
Yes, yes.
Two pits?
Little explanation, you can't fix people that are, well, let me rephrase that. Two people decided, one adult, one elderly juvenile, got on the river at 7:00, and didn't know where they were going, and when they got after dark, their mother got very worried about them, as they should, so we called the army out and had the helicopter up and all that, and they finally themselves got off the river and were walking down the road, scared to death, because they didn't know where they were at.
Thanks, Al.
Yes.
Okay. I have a few comments or questions for chief, anybody else? Chief, I absolutely love the decorative rope with posts. You seem to suggest with the new council that that idea kind of evaporated or fell to the wayside.
I mean, what, the council, no, I-
I remember the council ever saying no to that, I'm looking at and saying-
What about the old council? When the elections occurred?
I was on the old council.
I don't know, but we brought it up, Nancy. So, it was there.
That is just getting an auger, put those posts in square, the hole's already pre-cut, and then put the rope through it, I mean, that's, that could be-
That's simple, wait, you go to the last one, I mean, that's pretty simple. I think I could thread that needle.
It looks beautiful, too. I think it would really, the decor would really go with, like you say, the rope, yeah. So, I think if it fell to the wayside, it was just an idea that that buried what everybody else was talking about something.
That's what it did, it got buried for a while, so.
As far as the Tickety, you and I have communicated a little bit about the parking at the Tickety. And I did notice that after I had, uh, supplied you with some photos of what was going on, I noticed the next day or the next week, there were several tickets on the vehicles. And then I noticed in the days after that, the parking situation seemed to have improved quite a bit. You know, almost like to work that out, uh, that there were some tickets on the windows. So I noticed after I saw tickets, after bringing it to your attention, it seemed like when I came through, and I did it on purpose twice a day on the weekend, parking was pretty much orderly, and it wasn't like it was that one day I reported it to you. So I, I do think, Chief, that, uh, I'm not a big ticket person. I think when people come to Denonlin, it's distasteful to come here and leave here with a ticket. But, uh, there is a point, uh, when you see, like in the auxiliary lot, where someone has a truck and trailer parked over the top, three parking spots. When we have a parking lot that is packed to capacity and someone's in that. When you see a truck and trailer parked down inside in our squares. When you see, uh, trucks and trailers parked right next to a sign that says, "No parking." You know, there is, there is a point that we have to write tickets.
We've written seventy-seven citations.
And I think it does, that word, the word gets out.
Yes, sir.
So, oh, good. Thank you.
Yeah, so y'all can bring it up, and like I said, uh, it's, uh, easy, simple.
Troy, you know about how much that would cost?
I do have a file at the office from when we looked into it the first time. And I want to say we were budgeting somewhere close to about $4,000 to complete the project for materials.
The roof is expensive.
The roof is very expensive. It's very expensive. And the wood itself, we were getting through multiple suppliers because we couldn't get the quantity that we needed from one supplier. So that was also when the lumber rates were going through the roof at $100 a sheet for plywood. So you can imagine what you're paying for the rough cut post, right? So we can open that file up again, look into a budget cost. I've already pointed out to Jan that I'll either need money for next year's budget if we can't fit it into this year's project funds. But I'll have something for you by, uh, by next council meeting. Okay? And then it wasn't, it wasn't squashed by council. It wasn't squashed for any reason other than it was an unfunded, unscheduled project at the time. And in order to move forward, we were needing, uh, direction and approval on the expenses. But other projects took precedence, and we just kept going forward. Didn't become a problem again until this summer.
Well, Chief, I think it's not only an excellent idea to help with the issue that we're dealing with. I think the aesthetics of it, I think it would really brighten up this parking area and make the place look really great. I think it's a win-win from either...
It's a win-win.
Yeah, so Troy, you're just gonna have to accept the fact that someone's gonna back into them. Someone's gonna... Everybody out there and put a new one in or straighten it up, and it can't stay that way for six months and all that stuff.
Don't worry about that.
Well, that's the reason why we didn't want to put them real deep. In case somebody did back into them, it would, they would bend or, you know, move over or would do as much damage.
Yep. The only other challenge to be, the grounds here, City Hall was constructed with a lot of line rock. We tried to put those temporary posts in. That was an all-day event. So we'd need the equipment, but we can run the equipment and put it in with. And, uh, the other thing is the underground challenges. We do have a major power line that runs through this entire parking lot, William Street to Ohio Street, that feeds the entire historic district. So as long as we're identifying where the hazards are, we'll make it happen.
Can't we get that one?
We're talking about putting posts in the ground foot. So, anyway.
It's, well, I think the attitude that I would like to have is, let's figure out how to do it. Let's not talk about how we can't do it, right?
Just like I said, I know what we need. I know what cost was a year ago, a few years ago.
Because what I'm finding with these projects...
Yeah.
I said death and life is in the power of the church.
You know, finding with these projects, every time they're brought up or discussed, immediately there's all the obstacles that impede the project. Well, okay, now what do we do? Let's get past the obstacles and let's figure out how to do it.
All right.
All right, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Any others?
Thank you for your service, sir. I appreciate you.
Okay, uh, anything else, Manny?
Oh, yeah, I enjoyed it. I took pictures.
I had nothing to do with it.
Appreciate your service.
Is that it, Manny? Okay, we move to, uh, council comments, if there are any. Is there any? Is there one?
Well, the last meeting, I left early, and the mayor told me he wanted to hear about the meeting I went to, so I'll tell you a little bit. I forgot my notes, though, but I'll tell you a little bit what I know. I left early to go to, to attend the meeting in Chapman, at Union Missionary Baptist Church. The citizens had scheduled a meeting with Kathy Bryant, and she was able to be present. So I got there just as she was up speaking, you know, just introducing herself and telling them a little bit about her. But the main reason for the meeting was to see if the county could help with the Septet to Sewer project because there's not enough money to do it all. They have to do it in phases. So if I'm not mistaken, the FGUA representative says they only have 3.7 million, when the entire project is done. And the citizens wanted to know if the county could help. And Kathy said, "No," because it's an FGUA project. So, and then a lot of other questions came up for Kathy. I'm sure she expected, you know, there's different issues that they're having in the Chapman area. But that was the main, um, focus of the meeting, was to see if she could help. And she said she can't. But then after I left the meeting, I had a question in my mind, and maybe somebody can tell me. And I did email her. I haven't heard from her, though. I guess I'll text her. Because I got to thinking about their match of $50,000 for the Little League with Jim Gisley. They matched this $50,000. And FGUA is a utility company, and I just, I just don't understand, and maybe somebody can help me, how they can do that, but they can't help the citizens in Chapman. So I did email her, but I have not gotten any answers.
Ooh, that's an interesting, an interesting point. You can donate $50,000 to the Little League, but Chapman's on its own, right?
That's what it sounds like to me. And I did see, when I went on the city's link looking for the election stuff, I did see a link, um, FGUA. I think it was the city that done it on the website, you know, asking for help for the citizens and making comments.
There was a, I think they sent us a, like a poll or a survey that they asked us to publish on those sites. A citizen survey.
Okay, and I think they were asking for comments and help. I, I ran, I saw that. But I did email Kathy from the Orange County Commission's website, but I, I got no response. And that was a couple of days after the meeting, so...
I have a suggestion for you.
I didn't write her email down.
I have a suggestion that I, I can make now, but I can't make once the meeting's over.
Oh.
You might consider going to a citrus county commission meeting.
Citrus County?
I mean, I'm sorry. I'm speaking at both, Marion County. And speak in front of the entire commission and just say what you just said to them and see what their response is.
They have their meetings early in the morning, don't they? Like nine o'clock in the morning.
A lot of times when, because they're under the sunshine law, too. So what you say to Commissioner Bryant, she can't communicate to the others. So you've got to talk to the one. So if you take it upon yourself and you'll speak to the entire commission, that would be, that'd be interesting, so I'd suggest that.
But it was after the meeting, and I didn't think to ask her while she was there, but it just came to mind. I said, "I don't understand how they can help."
Then a few of the, uh, community... A few of the community leaders to go with you. You've got a few people to go with you.
Yeah. That's a good suggestion.
All right. Council comments. The only thing I have is, um, I guess right now we are the owner of the property on Paul Road, the city, correct?
We haven't signed the closing papers yet. We haven't actually closed, but...
But it's, the deadline's passed.
The due diligence period is...
Right, right. So that's just something I have to come in and sign?
Well, we'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I think the original, in the contract that was on before the 14th, we would, we would be, uh, closing, so... I'll have to get with the title company and see when all that's gonna be.
Okay, I got it. Our due diligence is over, but our closing is still a week ahead. Okay, got it. All right, council comments. I think we concluded. Uh, city attorney comments.
I have just a few things, counsel. You'll be seeing a number of ordinances coming before you in the next, um, at the next meetings. And in addition, I was asked to, uh, provide, um, some information on some of the things that could be done, uh, out here at the city dock as far as, as regulations. I guess there may have been some congestion, or I saw some photos regarding congestion, some other issues, some things going on with, um, I think there was an issue with a, some sort of equipment, um, like a boat hauling equipment, the type of thing, so commercial use out here. Currently, the city does not have any regulations for, that are specific to parks. Uh, there's some very rudimentary, basic provisions. Really, Blue Run Park is the only one that's been fleshed out. So if the city wants to look at comprehensive park regulation, that's certainly something that city council can do. Have a good start with Blue Run Park. I think a lot of those regulations can apply to just about all the parks. And in addition to that, council can come up with unique rules for each of the arcs if there need to be unique rules for a particular park because of a particular amenity. Some of the things, if commercial use, I understand, from what I'm gathering from council, it's not something the council wants to do away with. But one of the options that you have is implementing a commercial pass system, which is similar idea of Marion County. Crystal Springs has implemented a franchise agreement system, which essentially makes commercial use, um, prohibited unless there are certain agreements that the city enters into with particular vendors. So that's something that you all are considering, keep control over, over the parks and, uh, and still accomplish whatever goals you may have to repeal congestion, with problems that may be either intensifying at city parks or may have just not been addressed at this point. Putting that out there, if that's something council wants to take up, you know, those are the options that jump to mind.
Right now, if you go to our ordinances and our rules and regulations, there's very little out there that regulates what City Beach can be used for, how it can be used. Could someone actually make a statement that they could actually take, uh, park a shuttle outside City Beach and, and have shuttle, uh, people come in and out of City Beach? An example of what I witnessed here at this ramp, just a couple of days ago, was a commercial entity, a dock building company with a huge barge loaded with, uh, equipment. Had equipment with pilings and chains and all kinds of equipment. About nine in the morning, getting ready to back the trailer with the barge using the city ramp. And much to my surprise, this company did not notify the office that they were doing that. They did not notify the police that they were there. This clearly could have been a hazardous and congestive situation. They just came and did it on their own. And when I asked questions of staff about that, there is nothing in our rules and regulations that requires anybody to report anything. Even a courtesy of, "Hey, I'm just letting you know that we're going to be putting a barge through your city ramp." Nothing, just doing that. So it, it just seems like, uh, our parks, we need to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's a lot of these things already out there, thousands of them throughout the country, that regulate how parks can be used and whatever. And, uh, right now, there, there's really hardly anything that prevents anyone from doing anything. And, uh, Troy, Troy actually tipped me off to this. He showed me some photos, uh, of a few days before where there was actually an excavator, one of those claw things, on the back of a, a barge being loaded on a ramp right there. Right when there's kayaks, boats, all kinds of things. So, uh, we, as long as we're on this topic of regulating our parks, I think we need to take a look at that. It's only gonna get worse.
Absolutely.
Especially if we're thinking about allowing, continuing to allow this ramp to be used commercially, which increases the congestion already. Not having any rules, regulations, no permit, no permission, no hours, no... So, uh, just bringing it to everybody's attention. And what would you, what would you do if council wanted to go in that direction? You would just try to put some, uh, some, kind of like a template, kind of like a template thing?
I think the easy part is to incorporate the rules that already exist. I mean, we already have A through, uh, I think V. And maybe three or four of those rules are specific to Blue Run Park. So that's the first step. I think another step is probably more geared towards a workshop environment. Staff can certainly go out and provide like some, some documents, um, just maybe some of the franchise agreements that Crystal Springs has in, in place, and, and get ahold of some of those, look at some examples out there. And in addition, I think what would be a key component is input from, uh, law enforcement, from Chief and, and his folks of, you know, what the, the real problems are out there, what the problems may be for congestion, and what the solutions would be, so that we can think about how to incorporate those into rules. Because what you're facing down in the park, while other communities may face it, you have a different orientation, you know, a different orientation here in the city of the park and, and different problems. And, and it, it does require a little bit of a custom solution. So I think, uh, if it's something you wanted to get started on, just some direction to staff to start bringing back some examples. And once the problems are clearly identified, we can start the next step of actually drafting the rules and putting them into place.
Isn't it true that in most municipalities that are considerably larger than we are, they have departments of recreation, parks and recreation, and therefore they actually have a system where anybody who wants to, uh, be involved or use, a single use, has to get a permit? So it becomes, in those particular situations, they not only have the code, but it's a source of income. Now, we're defensive because we do not have that kind of opportunity in terms of our budget and in terms of our population. But definitely, we should have to be able to emulate codes, could we not?
What I'm talking about, certainly, those, those codes are all record and available, so there's a lot of good models out there. And in fact, the Blue Run Park and large park is based on, on those codes, so they're very similar. So the generic rules are very, very easy. But if it's something specific, you know, for particular traffic down there, um, when I'm talking traffic, I'm talking boat traffic, foot traffic.
Well, something where you need a permit, where you come in and you, and you have a permit and you pay for use.
If that's the case, then that's, that's the franchise agreement system that I was referencing. And there are some templates out there. So some of the neighbors, uh, some of the neighborhoods do have that franchise system in place. And, and that's granting a specific right and entering into that agreement. So then, yes, there is a contractual agreement with a particular, in other words, going through that system, any vendor would have to have, they would not only have to abide by the rules, which if they disobey those, those are applicable and have those particular repercussions. But then they also do have an agreement with the city, and if they were to violate the rules, they could also be contractually violated. to violate the rules, they could also be contractually liable. The city may not wish to renew that agreement or to revoke the agreement, if there's so many rules that are broken. So it's a different system to police them, yes, because then you have contractual teeth and regulatory teeth.
Sounds like the workshop session.
So Mandy, I know you're looking for something to do. So, you know, if we could just come up, you know what we're doing, you know what we're talking about. Just start trying to put some concepts together, what we can do to regulate our parks. As you pointed out, there is virtually nothing currently in place, correct? Right? So we'll...
You want this on August workshop?
Yeah. August, well, August is 40 days away, right? I mean, yeah, just put it on...
August 3rd is probably Monday, so that's...
Put it on the 3rd, and if you're not ready, you're not ready.
Oh, I will be ready. There's a lot we can talk about. September 7th. Yeah, let's just do September 7th. If you can get it on the 3rd, that's cool, we'll probably August, September 7th. Let's do September 7th.
All right.
Be realistic with your expectations.
Especially we need to consider, if we are going down the path of charging fees for the ramp, you can't have what I just described going on. You just can't. Okay. Are you, are you finished?
That's, that's all I have. Vacation rental ordinance is one of the big ones that's gonna be coming your way after planning has a look at it. It's been completely retooled, it's a sort of a way that incorporates really everything, I think, that's everything. Any kind of tool that's in Florida that's regulated vacation rentals, you have a very comprehensive ordinance that gives you the full platter, and if you wish to pull anything off, then certainly that's, that's up to Council, but it's a, it's a long, a long one that, it's got everything in it.
One thing I can say, this has been a very ambitious council. We, we have a lot of things going on right now, wouldn't you say?
There's a lot of things going on right now.
Very ambitious.
They do.
Okay. So finished with the City Attorney comments, now we swing back to number 14, public comments. Is there anyone who would like to address the council again? Yes, Tim?
12140, Maple Street here in Dunellen. As we already mentioned, you know, the price of insurance going up, going low gas, going low groceries, we've seen everything. This may not be the time to do the same thing with the budget. 6.5, as Jan spoke out, spoke, is a 6% increase, and that just adds to the pain that the public is already feeling, the residents, you know, all of us are feeling, to inflation that we've not seen in 40 years. So it's not like it's, you know, something happened, you know, I'm not sure how to even word it, but it's a, it's a forward, this hasn't happened in four decades to this extent. So we really might use the rope barrier, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, use your colleagues against you. You know, this might be the time to figure out how to do it, and go with the 6.0912 and not find the reasons why we can't. You know, just because we're in circumstances that we've not seen in four decades, you know, and like everything's hurting, the people are hurting out there, their paychecks aren't going up, not to this rate, and all that kind of stuff. The people that are on fixed income, the retired folks who makes up a lot of this community, you know, they're really getting hurt badly, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak before we close this up? Okay, public has had an opportunity to speak again. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we're all good.
Second? Okay. Dean Adams, thank you very much.